Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to session, um, call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Uh, I guess our, our stand-in city clerk tonight will call the role.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Costuk.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember CRC.
Here.
Great. All right. Welcome back, everyone, uh, after our August recess. Before we get into our agenda this evening, I just want to spend a moment and recognize that our community lost, um, two members, uh, this summer, uh, and mention Pam Larson, who lived on Grant Avenue for about thirty years. Uh, she had moved recently to St. Paul. She died last month. Um, Pam was well-known here in the community. She coached, uh, for the soccer league for many years and kept the shoe exchange on her porch on Grant. She was an active member of the DC Labor Chorus. She chaired the Tacoma Park Folk Festival for a number of years, was the president of the Tacoma Park Foundation when it was, uh, reinvigorated in the mid-two thousands. And, um, as one person who I've been emailing with who knew Pam well, said, uh, she was a thoughtful, dedicated leader who never needed the spotlight and who brought people together to make life better for communities locally and nationally. Um, I will say there is an event being planned, um, for Pam, uh, for mid-October and as soon as the details of that are, um, finalized, we will be sharing that. Um, in addition, unfortunately, last weekend, we also, um, lost Chief Jimmy Jarboe. Uh, he was a Tacoma Park firefighter for over sixty years. He served as a frontline firefighter up to chief, and in his later years, he was one of the biggest fire safety activists in the country. I would say at least one and probably two generations of Tacoma Park children, uh, will fondly remember Chief Jarboe and his fire safety lessons. Um, there is, uh, a service for him on this Sunday that I will be attending along with the, uh, police chief and possibly other members of, um, the city, uh, going as well. Um, so I think if we could just take a moment, um, to remember those two members of our community who, um, passed away last month. Thank you for that. Um, looking at our agenda, we had one, um, change. We were gonna move the, uh, appointments to our Tacoma Park Youth Council till September twenty-first. Um, so we'll do that. And then next up, we are supposed to be swearing in a board of election member. Is Mr. Quinn with us yet? Nope? Okay. So we will hold that and come back to it. And instead, I will move now to our proclamations for this evening. We have three of them. Uh, thanks to Councilman Kostik, we have the Welcoming Week proclamation. I will read that. Whereas the city of Tacoma Park is home to a diverse population of refugees and immigrants, adding to the economic strength and cultural richness of our community. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is a welcoming city that celebrates the growing diversity of its residents and acknowledges that refugees, immigrants, and all newcomers enhance the culture, economy, and well-being of our community. And whereas our community's success and well-being depend on making sure that all residents feel welcome here. And whereas residents of Tacoma Park aspire to live up to our highest societal values of acceptance and equity and treat newcomers with decency and respect, creating a vibrant community for all to live in. And whereas by working together, we can achieve prosperity and well-being. And whereas Welcoming Week is an annual celebration to honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors of all backgrounds together to build strong connections and affirm the importance of welcoming and inclusive places in achieving collective prosperity. And whereas we invite all residents of Tacoma Park to join this movement of communities nationally and internationally by renewing our commitment to our core values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents and staff proclaim September ninth through the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, a Welcome Week. Um, next, we have, um, proclamation for National Preparedness Month for September two thousand and twenty-two. This year's theme for National Preparedness Month is "A Lasting Legacy: The Life You Built is Worth Protecting. Prepare for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family." Whereas National Preparedness Month is observed every September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas this month, make sure you and your family have a plan for when disaster strikes. And whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for the Tacoma Park community to focus on preparing its homes, businesses, churches, schools, and institutions for any type of emergency, including storms, natural disasters, and accidents. And whereas investing in preparedness can reduce fatalities, prevent physical and economic damage, and aid in accelerated recovery after events in our communities. And whereas Tacoma Park Emergency Preparedness Committee advises the city council on preparedness issues and serves as a resource for residents by promoting preparedness at community events, writing articles, hosting activities, and preparing educational materials. And whereas all residents of the city of Tacoma Park are encouraged to inform, make a plan, build a kit for disasters, and get involved in preparedness activities. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-two as Preparedness Month in Tacoma Park and encourage all residents, families, organizations, and businesses to develop their own emergency plans and work together toward creating a more prepared and resilient community. And do we have anyone from the emergency committee? No, coming this evening? Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Um, finally, uh, we are celebrating the hundredth anniversary of the Tacoma Post VFW Number Three-Fifty and the Auxiliary this weekend. Um, the celebration will be on Saturday at the VFW in Hell's Bottom. So we have a proclamation from them. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Three-Fifty opened on February twenty-third, nineteen-twenty-one in a member's house in Tacoma Park on Maple Avenue. Whereas Post Three-Fifty is the second oldest VFW post in Maryland. Whereas the current property was acquired in the nineteen-sixties in an area affectionately known as Hell's Bottom. And whereas Post Three-Fifty is a community service organization open to veterans where they can socialize and exchange stories in a relaxed and supportive atmosphere. And whereas the organization has opened its doors to non-veterans in our community for hosting events for nonprofit organizations and for other special occasions. And whereas the post is, uh, the post is part of the identity of Tacoma Park. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby proclaim and celebrate Tacoma Post Three-Fifty, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and Tacoma Post Three-Fifty Auxiliary for over a hundred years of service to veterans, their families, and the Tacoma Park community. So those are our updates, and I still don't see Mr. Quinn, so we'll keep checking. Um, in terms of upcoming, um, meetings, I just want to note that, um, this council, and we have elections this fall. So after tonight, this council has six official meetings, um, left. Um, next week, we, um, have Speed Hump Request, a public hearing on that, a Car Free Day Proclamations, uh, appointments to our Youth Council, uh, Second Reading Ordinance amending the annual budget in order to provide wage adjustments for compensation to our city employees, and First Reading Ordinance regarding, uh, November eighth city elections. Our work sessions next week, we actually have, uh, representatives from the county and the state coming to talk to us about paid family leave. And we'll also have a work session on the Speed Hump Request. Then on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, um, in our regular meeting, we have our voting sessions, the Second Reading Ordinance regarding the city elections, and the First Reading Ordinance authorizing the installation of a Speed Hump. Our work session that night will be on charter amendments, ethics ordinance amendments, and an update on the ARPA, um, uh, program, including, uh, the library project. And then we then move to early October. The city council will not be meeting on Wednesday, October fifth, in Observis of Yonkapur. And then on, uh, Wednesday, October twelfth, we will continue with our meetings. We'll have a public hearing on the charter amendments, recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our voting session that night will contain a First Reading Charter Amendment resolutions, First Reading Ordinance amending the Ethics Ordinance, and the Second Reading Ordinance authorizing installation of a Speed Hump. We will have a work session reviewing the Public Space Management Plan and draft resolution, so following up on our presentation from tonight. Then on Wednesday, October nineteenth, our voting session is a resolution adopting the Public Space Management Plan, Second Reading Ordinance amending the Ethics Code. And then Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, we have the Second Reading Ordinance regarding the Charter Amendment Resolution. And tentatively, we have a meeting on Wednesday, November second, but that's it? [laughing] Councilmember Kovar says that's it. We shouldn't have a meeting on November second. Um, if anything has to get bumped that this council needs to vote on, we will hold that meeting. But otherwise, uh, no new business will be held on that night. Um, all right. Um, still not seeing Mr. Quinn. Then we will go to our presentation this evening. Um, and welcome our guest. Uh, we are getting an update on the Minor Master Plan. And do I turn this over now to the city manager or?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this evening, we'll have Acting Planning Manager Alex Friedman is going to, uh, introduce our guest this evening.
Now, can you hear me all right? All right. [laughing] Um, good evening, um, Mayor and council. Uh, it's really nice to be here. Um, tonight, we will be hearing a status update on the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. In twenty-twenty-one, the, in partnership with the city of Tacoma Park, Montgomery Planning began the Minor Master Plan process um, to update portions of the two thousand Tacoma Park Minor Master, um, Tacoma Park Master Plan. And this is to re-envision critical resources within the city and the surrounding community with special focus for the project area on the Washington Adventist Hospital and University campuses, Erie Center, and Maple Avenue, um, between those areas up to Philadelphia. The last time this team that I'm about to introduce presented before the council was earlier this year in March for their existing conditions analysis. Um, so to keep it brief, I would like to introduce from Montgomery Planning staff, um, visiting us from Zoom today, um, Melissa Williams, who is the project lead, and she will, um, also be the one giving our presentation tonight with some support from additional staff members. So I will hand it over to her and her team. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, so once again, good evening for the record. My name is Melissa Williams, and I'm the project lead for the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. I'm also joined by Lauren Stam, who will be, um, also presenting this evening. We also have Larissa Cleven. She is the supervisor of the, uh, master plan team. And then we also have Elsa Hazel McCoy joining us, and he's the chief of the Down County team. And so, um, as stated earlier, I'm here this evening to provide an update, um, including the Community Engagement Update Report. We're also going to, um, update on the plan partnerships. We're gonna talk about the upcoming fall visioning efforts, and then we'll talk about the updated plan timeline. Okay. So, um, as you can see here about with the partner update slide, the city of Tacoma Park is our primary partner in this planning effort. We hold weekly coordination meetings, um, where we discuss the plan and the plan process. In addition to this, the city is also undertaking analysis of their public spaces and Maple Avenue, parts of which are gonna be located within the plan area. And so staff will work to incorporate findings from these studies into this planning effort where applicable. Additional partners include some of our larger property owners such as the Washington Adventist, um, group. And we hold monthly coordination meetings with them and the city of Tacoma Park, where we discuss, um, their development, we discuss with their development team the status of the Washington Adventist Hospital site and university. We also meet with other plan partners, um, including the affordable housing providers within the area. So that would be the Montgomery Housing Partnership and Enterprise Foundation. We also have met with the civic associations and other community organizations located within the area. And then we also made it a point to meet with county agencies such as MCPS and MCDOT. Hold on a second. I just, it disappeared. Okay. So although the plan has a range of community assets, including high-density affordable housing, stakeholders express a desire for additional public amenities and other improvements as a part of our community engagement efforts. Staff will work to incorporate the responses, um, their responses and their comments along with information that we've received from residents, property owners, the city of Tacoma Park, and other stakeholders into our visioning efforts so that we might answer the following three questions. And those questions are primarily dealing with what's the future of the plan area, specifically that of the Maple Avenue and surrounding areas, and then the Washington Adventist campus and surrounding areas. And then we're also gonna think about how can the plan build on those existing community assets in order to enhance the quality of life for the residents there. And now I am going to turn it over to Lauren Stam, and she's gonna provide the update on the community engagement work that we've done.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Lauren Stam from Down County Planning. For the record, um, we began engagement for this plan last September. After hearing from over five-hundred-and-fifty community members and stakeholders, we took all the information we heard and summarized it in an interim report, uh, to share with you as well as the community. This report reflects all the comments we collected throughout our partner, through our partnership with Everyday Canvassing, uh, which I'll get into a little bit later, our online survey, as well as conversations with individual community members during our outreach and meetings with community groups. Each comment or response collected was coded to help us determine what issues were most important to the community. First, I'll share the main takeaways from that work, which reflect what we heard most frequently over the past year of engagement. Residents really enjoy living in Tacoma Park and appreciate its walkability, safety, proximity to DC, Silver Spring, Sligo Creek, as well as small businesses. Community members lamented the loss of the Washington Adventist Hospital and want to see a health clinic or urgent care facility remain on the site. Um, community members see Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park as an important asset to the community and want to make sure it's protected through better stormwater management and environmentally sensitive design, especially on the Washington Adventist campus. Though there were diverse views on scale, compatibility, and type, community members would like to see more housing, especially housing that is affordable, to be a part of the future development of the Washington Adventist campus. In addition to, in addition to housing, community members would also like more walkable retail options, particularly a grocery store. Um, and community members would also like to see more resources for the community incorporated into the redevelopment of the Washington Adventist campus. Most often mentioned were a community gathering space, a park, a gym or fitness center, and a swimming pool. Before we get into the more specific comments from our various engagement efforts, I want to share with you the demographics of the study area, which is a little larger than the plan area. As you can see on the map to the left, the study area is predominantly Black or African-American and also has a large percentage of white residents. Last spring, we partnered with Everyday Canvassing to canvas all of the multifamily residential buildings along Maple and Lee avenues within the plan area. They were able to interview two-hundred-and-thirty-nine residents and provide interpretation into several languages, including French, American, Spanish. The majority of those interviewed self-identified as African, and the second most represented group was African-American, followed by Latinx. Also, many chose not to respond to this question. You'll notice here that the racial and ethnic categories on this slide are different from the last. Um, and that's because Everyday Canvassing was able to collect much more nuanced racial and ethnic information than we're able to gather through census. So the comparison isn't exactly one-to-one. From this effort, we heard that Maple Avenue is generally a safe, quiet place to live, and many of those interviewed called it a good community. Although some did mention concerns about thefts, break-ins, and drug use. Residents are pleased with the quality of the schools, but are in need of additional resources for the community, including childcare, easier access to government assistance, healthcare, exercise equipment, and classes for computer and English literacy. Some residents reported satisfaction with the transportation service in the area, especially the walkability. Although a few mentioned that the bus service schedule is limiting and should have more direct connections to places of interest, such as downtown Silver Spring. Overwhelmingly, residents expressed a need for a grocery store on the Washington Adventist campus, as there's not one within walking distance. Um, and residents also mentioned wanting a new community center or gathering space, a recreation center, a playground, and more housing. Residents also reported some issues with the maintenance and security of the apartment buildings. Everyday Canvas, uh, we, we also partnered with them to canvas, uh, the Washington Adventist University campus to hear directly from students and faculty members. The majority of those interviewed self-identified as African-American. The second most represented group was Latinx, followed by West Central African and white, and many chose not to respond to the question. They shared with us that the campus's, uh, existing facilities are aging, um, not in great condition, and require updates, in particular, the dormitories. Um, students mentioned that they would like to see more social activities and events on campus, as well as spaces to socialize. They would also like to see new food options or restaurants, um, on the campus or in the area, as well as entertainment options. Students also reported that they did not feel connected to the surrounding community, and many said they don't spend time in the area aside from their classes, um, and instead often spend time in downtown Silver Spring. Throughout all of our, um, our outreach efforts, we also encourage everyone we met to fill out our online questionnaire. Um, and it was very successful with two-hundred-and-thirty-nine responses. The majority of those who responded to the questionnaire identified as white. Here's what we heard. Residents are passionate about Tacoma Park's walkability, trees, diversity, local businesses, green spaces and parks, small-town feel, public transit, liberal and progressive values, proximity to DC, Silver Spring, and Sligo Creek. Um, when asked about what needs improvement, residents focused on the underutilized land that's currently on the Washington Adventist campus, the amount of impervious surface there, the campus's aging facilities, and the need for more housing in the area, as well as issues with the runoff into Sligo Creek, um, pedestrian safety and connectivity. When asked about what should be preserved about the Washington Adventist campus, most residents responded that the open green spaces should remain, um, especially sledding hill, as it's known to the community, along with the trees and Sligo Creek Park. Um, some residents also said that nothing should be preserved. When asked about what should happen on the campus, overwhelmingly, residents said they would like to see housing there, especially housing that's affordable. Residents also mentioned mixed-use development, the addition of retail and restaurants. Um, and many residents also mentioned that they would like to see a new high school located in Tacoma Park and that this could be a possible site, uh, given that they're concerned about layers, um, overcrowding. When asked to share concerns about the future of the campus, residents mentioned increased traffic, as well as tension in the community over the development. Um, and residents are also concerned that it will either be overdeveloped or further deteriorate if no development takes place. In addition to these efforts, we heard from many community members through our outreach, um, at farmers markets just outside the plan area, at National Night Out, at our own retail pop-ups where we set up tables in the plan's commercial areas, and at meetings with community and neighborhood groups. We do have more detail about those efforts in the report itself. Um, but for now, I will hand it back to Melissa to discuss how we'll be moving into our next stage of engagement for the plan.
Thank you, Lauren. So our visioning efforts will focus primarily on the potential futures within the plan area. Our primary effort will take place on October eighteenth. That's our Visioning Open House. It will take place inside the cafeteria of the Piney Branch Elementary School. We'll have a host of exhibits, both informational, educational, and interactive stations. Live interpretation services will be available upon request so that we might, um, provide translation services for those who need, uh, those who are in need of it. And we'll also make sure that we have an online-on-demand version of the activities that are scheduled to take place. The boards and exhibits, um, that will be included will explain planning terminology, process, and also provide opportunities for feedback. As stated earlier, we'll, we plan to utilize the key takeaways noted in the Community Engagement Update Report as the organizing method for this activity. Next slide. And this is the revised plan timeline. Right now, we're currently in the visioning and preliminary recommendations phase. That is scheduled to run through winter of twenty-twenty-three. And this is the part of the phase where we will work to refine the information that we receive from our community engagement section, community engagement phase. We'll also complete our visioning work, and then we'll start to craft our preliminary recommendations. The goal is to have a completed, um, approved and adopted plan, um, by this time next year. So that would be fall of twenty-twenty-three, with the sectional map amendment completed sometime in the winter of the twenty-twenty-three or early twenty-twenty-four. And so that completes our presentation, um, for today. And if there are any questions or comments, um, we are available to take those now.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Um, first, I'll just turn it back to the city manager and see if the, uh, city staff have any other additional comments to provide. Not this time. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Uh, thank you, City Manager Fox. Um, any colleagues have a question? Um, as my colleagues are teeing up. I have one question about the students at Washington Adventist University. You mentioned that they said they frequented, um, downtown, um, Silver Spring. Did, did folks mention Long Branch at all in that area, given the close proximity also to the campus? I was just curious.
They did not. Uh, there were, I will say, you know, several.
I would say more in the Maple Avenue canvassing. There was a lot of mention of frequenting kind of the Tacoma Langley area for, uh, grocery store or other errands, um, kind of that area as well as downtown Silver Spring. But I would say less so with the Washington Adventist students.
Okay. Great. Uh, thank you. Uh, we'll go to Councilmember Smith now.
So thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Uh, I also appreciate the fact that, uh, we've had this, uh, similar briefing with Ward Five residents, and that's where, uh, Washington Adventist Hospital, Washington Adventist University are located. Uh, when, when you say that residents, um, indicated they wanted a grocery store, did they say specifically, you know, are they looking for another Trader Joe's? Would they like, uh, uh, an extension of the co-op? Did they go into that detail, or did they just leave it at generic grocery store?
Thank you for your question, councilmember. Um, they did, I would say mostly it was general and just walk, wanting a grocery store that was walkable. Um, I will say, I think, you know, several, there were also several comments about, you know, this would be a great location for another co-op, um, that did come up, because I think, you know, the co-op is so beloved. But I think predominantly, it was just wanting something that was within walking distance. There's not, you know, there are a few commercial areas, but there really is no grocery store, um, that's in, within walking distance.
So the major player in this project would be, uh, the Washington Adventist folks, right? So have you facilitated any meetings where you brought together residents and the Washington Adventist, uh, senior staff representatives? Because I haven't seen those meetings yet. It seems like you guys are having meetings and, and I, and, you know, you could get good readouts from you guys. Uh, but, uh, when you talk to residents, they, uh, have a different opinion? Uh, so have you thought about bringing those two groups together and see how we can actually facilitate a way forward on what both parties want to see on that campus?
Um, I would say, so we, we do have those regular conversations, um, with the Washington Adventist group. And they are making, um, progress. Uh, I would say it's safe to say that. I would say it's safe to say that we have encouraged them to reach out to the community and to schedule some engagement activities. We, I would say, I think it's fair to say that you'll probably be seeing something within the coming months as a part of their kind of ongoing activities. I don't know if Elsa wants to chime in and maybe add anything additional?
I'll let you hear muted.
Okay. All right. So I guess the one thing I'll add is that it's important to remember that the Minor-Master Plan Amendment is going to make a recommendation about, for development in the plan area, so not just the Adventist campus, but also Maple Avenue. It's going to make recommendations about new zoning and, you know, livability in parks and all the other great things, but those recommendations are really going to be, and even the zoning is going to be fairly general, and that the specific, you know, the specific development project that is going, any development project that is going to be implemented on the Washington Adventist campus or anywhere in the plan area, is going to go through the regulatory review process at the Planning Department. The city will be involved in that. So one of the things that, as Melissa mentioned, the boards, the information at the Open House is going to be about educating residents as to sort of what happens when, and that, you know, there are process requirements and there are time requirements. So there will be ample opportunity for folks to provide their thoughts about what shouldn't and maybe shouldn't happen at the Washington Adventist campus. But again, the plan recommendations are going to be somewhat general, but then when they, when whoever decides to build something new at the Washington Adventist campus, there's going to be even more opportunity for residents to provide specific views on very specific designs. Anything that I think will be shown at this stage is going to be very schematic, it's going to be very high-level. So we have lots of opportunities in front of us to work together to produce the best outcome we can.
I appreciate that, but I would also say that even if these are general recommendations, I know the residents of at least Ward Five would want to be a part of that process. So yes, I know there are more things down the line, but residents want to be heard and make sure that they give input, and whatever comes out of this final document, they can say that they were a part of it. So thank you very much, and I look forward to the next iteration of the Minor-Master Plan.
Can I just add one more thing? Because there are so many steps sort of between here and, you know, next fall, when Melissa went through the schedule, you know, at every step for preliminary recommendations, for the staff's draft plan, you know, there will be a public hearing, there will be work sessions, there will be, you know, discussions at the city council, then at the county council. So there is going to be, at every step, the public is going to be, in addition to the city council and the board, going to be briefed on the specific recommendations that are available. Comments will be, you know, solicited, and so people are going to be updated. People are going to be involved in every step of the way.
I, once again, appreciate that schedule, but residents do like informal meetings hosted by their council member or someone that's running for council. I would say, hey, put those also on the schedule so that residents can touch you, talk to you, one-on-one regarding this plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. I think the conversation we were just having with regard to sort of what the steps are between the master plan and the minor master plan and the actual development is often something that I hear from residents is confusing, and it's great. There's so many opportunities to sort of influence the minor master plan, which then influences the development, but oftentimes, it's much harder for residents to have that direct involvement with the specific development plans. So I appreciate that you're sort of helping explain that process a little bit in these meetings that you're having with residents, so thank you for doing that. Two things just sort of jumped out at me as I was looking at the presentation. The first was, you mentioned the questionnaire results. There were a couple of specific concerns that were raised with regard to traffic, and I think overdevelopment and some things. I didn't see, and I know you're not summarizing everything, but I didn't see any concerns that were specific to the outreach that was done at the university with the students and along Maple Avenue. So I was just curious, were those also concerns that you heard from those, that outreach that you did there from those residents, or were there different concerns? Just curious sort of how residents in those areas were viewing things.
I think, I think the concerns were a little bit different. I think overdevelopment and the concern about scale was pretty unique to the survey. I think a lot of the concerns that we got, you know, this outreach was conducted, so it's, it was, I think, March of 2021, and this was canvassing that was done. And so some of the concerns were a little bit more relevant to kind of daily life. This was, you know, people were being interviewed at their door or in their home, and so many residents reported issues actually related to their own apartment building. And so there's a little bit more detail about that in the report. We didn't dive too deep into that here, but those were issues that were brought up there, and there was a little bit less concern brought up about the future of the development, aside from really, I think, being frustrated that the hospital's no longer there and wanting to see that kind of use remain or have some kind of medical service. In regards to the students, I think, again, the concerns were more focused on kind of their experience. I think their concerns were more about kind of improving the issues that they see on their campus today. And so, you know, I think, I think these different groups, and that's part of why we kind of presented this information this way, because I think when you present kind of the overview at the beginning, you miss a lot of the nuance in that different, these different groups have really different concerns and focuses, and so I think it's important to break that out.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you. And then my last question, or more, I guess, sort of thought that I wanted to toss out was, I know when we've looked specifically at the demographics of Tacoma Park, that we don't have a huge population of young people. So it strikes me particularly that the students are spending more time in Silver Spring, where maybe there are more businesses that sort of appeal to a younger crowd than some of ours do. And I just wondered if you could comment briefly about some of the, sort of the age ranges of the feedback that you got, and if you saw any differences based on age?
Unfortunately, for the students, we did not collect, age was not collected as part of that survey. I think we can make some guesses, you know, based on the fact that they are students, but I think you're hitting on something very real, that they are really attracted to kind of what's going on in Silver Spring. And I also think the location of the campus itself, you know, it's not extremely proximate to downtown Tacoma Park, and right surrounding the campus, there isn't a ton of activity for them to quickly go to. Many mentioned that they are, many students mentioned that they commute, so perhaps they're coming through Silver Spring, and it's on their way home, but I think you're hitting on something really real, you know, that they're drawn to what's going on in Silver Spring and a little bit less drawn to the activities that are currently available in Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman C.R.C.
Okay. I just want to echo my thanks to you all and your team. I've been at so many different events, and I've seen you all out there, talking to people, and the level of engagement that you've done is just tremendous, so I definitely commend you all for the level of outreach that you've done. One of the things that I did kind of hear, like, two different types of information around development, businesses, restaurants, but don't overdevelop. Did respondents of any of the groups kind of provide you all with any idea of density or height, or any, anything that's a little bit more specific than, we want some restaurants and bars, but don't make it too crowded?
Great question. I think this is one of the things that's a little bit hard to really have a definitive answer on, because people really have various ranges. You know, some people want to see a lot of development here. They see it as an opportunity. They want to see more housing, and they think this is an obvious place for it. I think many others are concerned that it might be out of scale with the neighborhood. I think when they talked, you know, there was a lot of discussion about wanting more walkable retail, and I got the sense, as many compared, you know, what they want to see as what already exists in Tacoma Park, but in old, you know, in the old town of Tacoma Park. And so I got the sense that that, you know, some people wanted to see kind of that sort of scale, but really, there was a broad range, I would say, as many, you know, wanted to see intensive development as didn't, and there was really a mix. So I think that's one of those more nuanced points that people have differing opinions.
And so how do you all take, like, that level of feedback? Because I know, like, a huge part of the next process to kind of think through the zoning levels and the density levels, and so how do you all take that level of mixed feedback that you may receive from a community to ultimately make and craft recommendations regarding density and zoning and those kinds of things?
So I would say that that's, that segues right into what the visioning process is all about. So we're going to take all of that information that we received and, you know, taking into account conversations that are happening right now with property owners and other stakeholders, and with the city and the county, and we have to take all of that and put that together, and then we use the visioning process as a way to refine it. So we actually start to have those conversations about if we see that a large group of people have said that they wanted additional retail, like, what does that mean? In the grand scheme of things, are we talking moderate development? Are we talking more dense development? Those are all the conversations, the types of conversations that we're going to start to have with the community on October 18th. And we use those visioning efforts and exercises as a way to refine what we've heard to this point and start to craft preliminary recommendations. And in getting to the concerns about the community being able to continue to participate, it will further refine those recommendations after, you know, we've crafted preliminary recommendations, and then we'll come back to the community and we'll say, this is what we, this is what we believe that you meant, you know, and there's some further refinement that happens at that point. So it's a linear process. So we start with that initial, you know, one-on-one contact where someone says, oh my God, I think we don't have enough of X or Y or Z, and that goes into a report, and we batch the like comments together where possible, and then we get to this visioning effort where we say, listen, this is one of the comments that rose to the top. You know, when you say this, what do you really mean? And we show different examples of that potential future, and then from there, we craft a preliminary recommendation, which ultimately is further refined and becomes a recommendation that ends up in the plan. So it's a continuous process, you know, it's kind of like baking a cake. We continue to add ingredients, and we hope at the end of this that we have a really delicious cake that everyone wants to slice up. I guess is the best metaphor that I can come up with.
No, that's an excellent metaphor. Thank you so much for that. And I think you actually answered my second question, because we heard, it sounds like you heard housing, right? And remind me, did the students, they talked about the quality of the dorms, which I mentally lump into the whole housing question as well. You know, I'm assuming that perhaps through the visioning process, the concept of what people mean by housing, affordable housing versus student housing versus, you know, density, are those aspects that are also, that will also be fleshed out a little bit more when we are in that visioning process? Or do you all feel like you've gotten enough feedback to know that housing generally is something that people are interested in having on the campus?
I can say that housing came up a lot, and I think Lauren mentioned this, that it was, it was housing, and it was varied types of housing. So, you know, we heard a lot of conversation about the types of housing that could happen, not just on the campus, but on the plan, you know, through the plan area in general. And so that's one of the conversations that we'll have. And when we talk about interactive exercises, there's something that's kind of like, it's like a visual survey or a visual preference, where you show different types of housing at different types of density, and, you know, so that people actually have something that they can respond to, something physical they can respond to. And we ask them to kind of select, like, what are the things that you think are in line with what you told us earlier and also are appropriate, you know, for the types of, because, you know, we've got distinct areas within the plan that may call for different types of housing. And so we'll flesh, you know, all of that gets fleshed out, but I can assure you that housing was something that came up quite a bit in almost every single group that we spoke to, you know, so that from the students to the seniors, from the people on Maple Avenue to the people that were at the farmer's markets, everyone mentioned some type, some sort of housing.
Well, thank you again so much. This has been such a helpful conversation to have and study that you all did, and definitely looking forward to the visioning stage.
Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the community outreach, and I think it might be that my questions have already been answered. So I noticed that the resident survey got, as you pointed out, had somewhat different concerns highlighted than the door-to-door surveys. Who, do we know who responded to the resident, to the survey? Was it people mostly outside of the plan area? Or was it some of the same people that had, had been reached through other outreach already? Do we know anything more than the racial breakdown? Because that struck me as pretty different, too.
Yeah, so we did, we did collect ward information as well, although this plan area, it's a little bit challenging, because it actually includes several corners of several wards, and so that breakdown did not prove as helpful as we thought it might be. It was an older population. We do know that, you know, this, this survey was filled out by several people that we spoke to at farmer's markets, because, you know, we were encouraging them to do so, as well as many of the meetings that we attended. There's a little bit more in the report, I think, about the detail. Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up rapidly, because it was not a part of our presentation, but we do have a little bit more detail about who those people were, but I think several of them were those that we met with in community meetings. Melissa, do you want to add anything there?
Yeah, I think you hit, you hit the nail on the head. I would say that when we were having the responses to the questionnaires, a lot of those comments came in prior to us doing the canvassing. So there is a correlation that a lot of those, the people that responded to the questionnaire, were responding to meeting with us at the farmer's market, and we actually met with people at the farmer's market, the Tacoma Park farmer's market, and also the Crossroads farmer's market. And so I think it's, it's fair to say that a lot of the people that we actually met with at the Tacoma Park farmer's market, because it was outside of the plan area, gave us more broad concerns, like, the concerns were a lot broader. They weren't as specific as the people that may have responded to the questionnaire as a result of kind of interacting with us during the canvassing effort. So I don't know that that answers your question, but I would say that it's, it's probably, if you have an opportunity, you know, really take a look at the Community Engagement Update Report, and the attachment has a lot of information in there, may actually raise more questions. And definitely feel free, anyone that's, you know, looking at that... And definitely feel free, anyone that's, you know, looking at that report and you have additional questions or comments, definitely feel like you can reach out to us and we'll do the best that we can to follow up on any of your questions.
And I will just add, Melissa. So I was able to pull up the information about the ward breakdown. And about almost two thirds of the folks that responded to that survey were from Ward one, fifty, fifty-seven percent. And then the second most common ward was Ward five with 12%. So it was definitely predominantly residents from Ward one. But there is more information, as Melissa said, in the report, and we are happy to answer any questions if you want to.
Thank you. Yes, I flipped through the community engagement report before I came tonight. And I appreciate all the demographics. It helps to think about what community outreach techniques work in certain neighborhoods and who responds to surveys. Just generally good to know. My second question.
Before you went, I just, I think Lauren, the what you just said, the statistics you provided us on who responded to the survey goes directly back to Councilmember Smith's point before about really having, and I'm not saying, I know you have this on your radar, but I just think that really underscores the importance of doing particular outreach to the residents of Ward five. That would be, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bala, that I just wanted to lift that up again, because that's really stark that you had that many responses from Ward one. Not surprising, but.
And we need increase in Ward four.
Yes, yes. So I, Councilwoman Bala.
No problem. Very quickly, Elsa had started to touch on the schedule for visioning. I'm really excited about the visioning process. And in the version I'm looking at, there's not a specific slot for coming back to Tacoma Park Council. And if there is one, maybe you could just put that in there wherever fits. So we all know when that's gonna be. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Kovar.
I'm sorry, this is Elsa. Thanks for the question. I think, you know, we we are coming back to the city council before we go to the planning board at every step. So as part of the memorandum of agreement, you'll you will see plenty of us.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I noticed in looking at the suggestions that people had of the recommendations they have for what might be in the site or in the plan area, it included a range of things like housing, potentially a new school, retail, either a grocery store or other retail options, different types of community resources like the pool and the park and so on. And what I was curious about was, are all of those options sort of equal in the sense that some type of zoning change would be required for any of those? Is that is that accurate?
Who's gonna answer that question? That's you.
I'm happy to. So the, and this is one of the things that is important to give folks the right context so that they know, you know, that they're giving us the informed feedback, is that a master plan is not necessarily going to guide or cause the implementation of a new pool or a new rec center. It is more about were there, I mean, so were there to be a private development that has to provide public space or depending on the zoning has to provide certain public benefits? What might those benefits be? And so it's not for a pool or a rec center. It's not really about the zoning change, except in terms of, you know, you can, the buildings can be this tall or this is how much density. It's about if there is private development and there are amenities, public amenities that are privately controlled, what are the recommendations of the plan? And so when a project comes through for development, then planning staff can say, well, you know, that you have enough space here for X, Y, or Z. And, you know, the second plan really recommends that you do that. So we want you to look at what's going to happen with that. The other side is sort of, were there to be a public project, you know, the each of the, at the back of each master plan, the final document, there's a list of of capital improvement program projects that are included in the recommendations and a cost estimate and who's in charge of that. So the, so the short answer to your question is a zoning change is not really going to dictate whether or not you can have a rec, a rec center or a pool. The longer answer is that, you know, this is all about molding private development to provide the public benefits that the community is looking for. And the minor master plan amendment is an opportunity to identify and prioritize those.
Well, thank you for that. I guess the word molding sounds to me like it's not 100% mandatory if it's controlled by a private entity and they want to do something and using this plan, we try to mold them in a certain direction. That's not necessarily where they're just ordered to do it. It's kind of a process of give and take. Is that is that a fair way to think of it?
Yeah. So the, so the zones that require, so some zones don't require any public benefits. Here's how tall your building can be. Here's how far it needs to be from the street. You know, here's how many units you can have, and that's it. Other, other zones that require these public benefits, you know, not all public benefits are going, you know, you could have multiple sites that have a similar zoning type requiring public benefits, but it may be too small to accommodate, you know, a pool or, you know, it may not be able to accommodate, you know, A, B, or C for a variety of reasons. So the implementation process that I talked about earlier, after the plan is approved and you have development projects going forward, it is, you know, the zoning code says you must do this, but the zoning code doesn't say you must put in a pool or you must put in a rec center. It says you have to provide public benefits. And one of those public benefits could be a pool or a rec center. So when it gets to the to the regulatory stage, to the implementation, to the the development application stage, the master, the zoning code requires that developments conform to the recommendations of the plan. So if the plan says the top three public benefits are, you know, A, B, and C, that gives planning staff, city staff and their role in the in development review, city council and the planning board to say, well, you know, if you're not doing A, B, or C, which were clearly priorities of the sector plan, maybe we're not able to find that you're in performance with the sector plan and you may not be able to get approval. So it is, it's not as cut and dried and as the zoning ordinance, which says it must be this or no more than that. It is, it's more nuanced and it is, you know, it's moral persuasion backed by the good efforts and the integrity of the minor master plan amendment and the requirements of the code.
Thank you. It's a great answer. No, I mean, I think the point is, it's not, if these four steps are followed, that gives you the answer. It's a whole political process. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Elsa, just to wrap up, I have one other question to, so, and us going through this process, is it accurate to say provides us more options or, as you were talking about, flexibility, whereas right now, the the land is zoned R60 for single-family homes, basically? So the impetus for this is to say, let's step back, look at this area and how it can benefit the, you know, the community and what is really needed here before something goes forward? Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah. Right, right now, the hospital is there by special exception, by sort of a special approval and the university as well. So in order to do anything other than build single-family homes on the campus, we have to do this comprehensive review that's required by state law. And the result of that comprehensive review is the minor master plan amendment document.
Great. Because I think that's part of the answer, Councilmember Kovar, to that question.
Yeah, yes.
I'd just like to add, for people who'd like more information, to please check the city website. If you drop minor master plan in the search engine, it'll take you to the city site with links to the Montgomery County, Montgomery Planning site for more information and details.
Sorry, I think those are all the questions we have and comments for this evening. Thank you again for returning and providing us with this update. And we look forward to seeing this project evolve and looking forward to October 18. So have a good evening and thank you for joining us. All right, that concludes the presentation. We're now a smidge early for public comments, but I think we can begin. We'll first start with public comments on voting items and we begin that here in the auditorium. First, are there any public comments on the resolution ratifying the agreement with Ask Me Local 3399? I see none. Are there any public comments on the first reading ordinance amending the annual budget in order to provide wage adjustment compensation to city employees? Okay, next, are there any comments on the resolution authorizing the use of FY22 State Revitalization Program National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED grants for short, to assist in the acquisition of 320 Lincoln Avenue? And a really hot topic. I know we have a lot of comments on a resolution designating resident agent for service of process. All right, seeing none. Then here in the, and I don't believe we had anyone signed up online for voting items. We will now move on to any other public comments and we'll start those in the auditorium. So if you have public comments, please come to the podium and you'll have three minutes.
... me to do. I'm Buddy Daniels, 908 Prospect Street, formerly of 19 Sherman Avenue. And as we all know, or if you don't know, the former fire chief, Jimmy Jarboe, passed away Saturday night. And Jimmy Jarboe was one of those people who you think are going to live forever because at even over 80 years of age, he was so full of so much energy and about everything and especially fire safety education. Jimmy knew me before I was born. Our families, the Jarbos, the Daniels, the Jordans, the Tulls, the Boatmans, the Lones, the Dawzes, and so many other families knew each other in the 1950s and the 1960s and helped to form what is Tacoma Park today. Remember, the first community center did not exist until 1971. The old firehouse was our community center. And it was the center of most of the community's activities. For well over 60 years, Jimmy Jarboe coordinated and taught so many fire safety, CPR, and first aid courses. Not to mention, he worked his way up to fire chief while doing all that. How many community folk festivals, street festivals, and other city functions has Jimmy attended and discussed fire safety to anyone who would listen, especially the children? It has been an honor and a privilege over the last 20 years to work alongside of Chief Jarboe at different city festivals and functions, myself at the emergency preparedness table, and Jimmy at the volunteer fire safety table. You know, a number of times I've asked myself, how many lives has Jimmy saved over all these many years with fighting fires, fire safety education, CPR courses, and so many other safety-related efforts? You know, it's hard to say. But I'm willing to bet that the number is in the thousands. I guess what we can all do now is continue to discuss and promote fire safety issues and other safety issues. That's what Jimmy would want. That's what firemen do. They will, they'll continue, will all continue. But he is a legend across this country in firefighting and the safety community. He is a legend in our community. He's the GOAT. He is the greatest of all time. I lived it, I know. And one anecdote, my sister Kay Daniels Cohen years ago, and she should have never told me this, said that when she was in fourth grade, she had a crush on Jimmy. And I never let them forget that when they were together, being the brat little brother that I was and still am. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, everybody. Long pandemic, long time no see. My name is Jacqueline Moore. I live at 7,005 Aspen Avenue in Tacoma Park. I wanted a moment to discuss the Lincoln Avenue Movement Sidewalk Project. I wanted to make sure that all council members are aware that if something comes up where immediate action is needed to halt a staff action such as power washing a sidewalk, all it takes is either a quick email from the mayor or emails from four council members to make that happen. My hope is that once a process for neighborhood-driven art projects that are done by residents, specifically children in all wards, that once we get that process, that a lot of creative juices will start to flow and that we'll have an even funkier and more beautiful city. So as a 32-year-old, 32-year retired teacher, I know firsthand that kids need creative outlets. The pandemic is proof of this. For those residents and council members and mayor here who don't have children or who did teach children or who did not teach children during the pandemic, need to consider perhaps babysitting for a night or two or volunteering in a classroom. It's not easy to keep young minds engaged and their bodies occupied. I wonder what will happen to murals like the stuffed animals on Guti Avenue or the mosaics on Sherman Avenue or the uplifting staircase just off of 410, right around the corner from us. While the mayor and council consider putting a process for resident-driven art in place, will city staff be roaming the streets with tape measures to make sure that not a single drop of paint or the tiniest bit of tile encroaches upon city-owned land? And then I wanted to end with some words from a traditional Inuit song. I think over again, my small adventure of my small adventures for all the things I had to reach, and yet there's only one great thing, to live to see the day that dawns and the light that fills the world. I, for one, would like to see each new day to be filled with art and the questions that the art brings to our everyday conversations among neighbors and the happiness this art brings to its creators. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mark.
Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Comfort, and I am one of the five property owners in Tacoma Park who hosted the native plant mural and the movement sidewalk during, which was a kid-designed and created art project during the pandemic. Some, hopefully some of you have seen it. Hopefully all of you have seen it, but in the past, because it is no longer, it was power washed and deemed graffiti and therefore power washed. So I did bring 16 pages with me and some of you have seen them.
I'm happy to get them to you.
Small print support for the project. I really hope you take the time to read it, as some of you have already, because it really shows the passion for community-driven projects in Tacoma Park and and kids creating art. Because this project isn't about me. Some people, I'm happy to be the lightning rod for criticism or even for a lien on my property, even though I'm one of five, even getting my mural power washed, which I paid artists, teen artists, to do, while other murals in Tacoma Park don't get power washed. But that's not what we're here to discuss. What I wanted to bring to you is really reflections on what it means to involve kids. Because I think you're about to come out with a great Tacoma Park Public Space Management Plan that has some recommendations based on what I've seen so far. I was only brought aware of this recently. My bad, but I didn't know this was going on and nobody told me or I would have been involved sooner. But I think it's really important to involve kids in a meaningful way. And I've done nonprofit work for 30 years and I've involved kids in a not meaningful way. So I know it when I see it. But to give you some examples, adults shouldn't design and do projects for kids like we did with the Equity Walk, like adults designed it, adults painted it, adults repainted it, adults created a QR code for phones. That's not a kid-designed project. So what we, what you also shouldn't do, which I've done actually, is have adults design a process and then stick a paintbrush in the kid's hand and be like, here, paint by numbers. Nope, red goes there, yellow goes there, we designed this. Nope, red goes there, yellow goes there, we designed this. What also we should not only do is just ask kids what they want. Like the Public Space Management Plan did on June 15th, like we got a couple of words out of that session, I think. But that's not enough to make it involving kids, really. Kids need to design it. And kids need to dream it. And kids need to do it. They need to do all of those things and not just be talked at by adults or handed a brush. So I hope that that's what our project showed. If it's the sacrificial lamb, great. Maybe it can bring more projects that have an official process. Maybe it can bring more young people who are now kind of pissed off actually and like ready to get involved in some way, in a constructive way. Some are running for youth council. I was hoping tonight to like celebrate those people that were nominated. So next week we can celebrate them. And I hope that you will take the Public Space Management Plan, you know, process really seriously, but to truly involve kids in the designing and the dreaming and the doing and not just saying that we like kids in Tacoma Park, but really, really involving them as we have done during this whole process. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Comfort. Any other public comments this evening in the auditorium? Okay, not seeing any. Is it Ms. Machui join us or? Online? Nope, she has not joined us. Okay, and Mr. Quinn has not joined us to be sworn in either, right? All right, we can get him next week. I think that concludes the, oh, she is here. Mary Jane, online.
I don't know. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Thank you. I can hear you.
Okay, you can.
I've heard all these people talking about this master, minor master plan amendment. Did, excuse me, did you ask anyone with special needs? Excuse me, I'm choking on my Impossible Burger. I'm sorry. Shouldn't be eating now.
Anywhere.
Sorry. Did anyone, any of these people ask someone with special needs what they would like to see? And I volunteered to have my house made into a home for people with special needs, but I have the, it's paid for. It's, it's falling apart, it's paid for, but the city wants to enlarge it like all these people in my neighborhood are enlarging their houses and make it into a home for people with special needs and maybe an eight or two. I'd, I'd welcome it. I'm volunteering it, okay? I volunteered it before. Because no one else seems to want to do it to, to volunteer their house. But this is the only house I own, but it's paid for, okay? And as the other alternative, I, over the years, there's been many meeting, community meeting about places like New Hampshire Avenue Place and the co-op thing and everything, other, other places. They said you're going to have housing for, supportive housing for special needs people. It never came. Everybody forgot about us. Everybody forgets us all the time when it comes to housing. Thank you. Please don't forget us. And I suggest for these young people on, in college, why don't you have a music venue for live music on campus there, maybe have it where the hospital used to be, part of it. In addition to urgent care, urgent care can come during the day and they can have theirs on Friday and Saturday or Sunday night or whatever night they like to celebrate. When I was a young person, I liked to listen to live music. I'm just guessing, maybe they would too, maybe. I don't know, I'm old. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Machui.
Thank you.
I believe those are all the public comments then this evening. We will now turn to council comments. Mr. Smith.
Listen, Mr.
Thank you, Mary Jane. It's good to hear from you. First, I'd like to say I, I appreciate the residents that came out. Ms. Comfort and Ms. Moore. I would ask, you know, that staff look into these issues and the next council can see if there is a way forward so that the situation that happened with the kids' art does not happen again in the city. I, I think that was a great project. And I, I'm sorry to see what, what resulted, but I think there is a way forward. And if staff could give some recommendations, I think a future council can find a way to resolve this issue. And we want kids all over the city to be able to express themselves. So I, I encourage the next council to look at this issue and change our regulations so that young people, if they want to draw on the sidewalk or on their house, they have the opportunity to do that. So thank you for taking your time to come out. And thank you for your advocacy on this issue. I know it's not easy. I know you'd never thought, oh, I'm going to do a little art project and all of a sudden I got to go down to the city council. So, but I, I do appreciate it. Thank you. And yesterday we had the nominating caucus. I just want to thank everybody who's running. I know it's not easy. This is currently my fifth term. And so I thank everybody that has stepped up and said that they want to put their name on the ballot. It will be entirely new council. So thank you. A good way to learn this, this process is to tune into our meetings. You will learn a lot and I appreciate all the people that came out to nominate and second their candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all the residents who came out to speak tonight. Really appreciate the reflections on Chief Jarbo as well as the recommendations for public space management and including children, which I think is a fabulous idea and ensuring that art is a part of that. And, and we're thinking about those issues. And, and I think Ms. Machui, if you're still on the line, I appreciate your comment as well, recommending that we ensure outreach to people with special needs in, in the process on the minor master plan as well. I had a couple of things I wanted to note tonight. First of all, on the proclamations. Thank you for the proclamation on welcoming week. Welcoming week is, as the mayor said earlier, an annual event that happens around the world and focuses on welcoming refugees and immigrants and communities. And the theme this year is where we belong. We, we sort of started the process a little bit late this year, but I would love to see in future years the city do more to, to mark this week, maybe with some audio visual productions or events and other things that really recognizes this week. Also want to congratulate the VFW Post, which is in Ward 3 and an important part of our community on their anniversary as well. And then just a couple of quick announcements here. First of all, want to congratulate everyone who was nominated at the nominating caucus last night. Really great to see a large number of people running for office and people engaged, which is, is really exciting and I think is going to bode well for our community. So I'm, I'm happy to see that. And then want to note that next Thursday is Car Free Day. And if you want to start planning ahead, you can register online at carfreemetrodc.org. And if you do, you're eligible for winning prizes and just participating in some events around the region. So start planning now and take advantage of that opportunity. And that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick. Councilwoman Circe.
Thank you all. So I want to first start by echoing my colleagues in appreciation of all of the folks that came out tonight. You know, Chief Jarbo and acknowledging the, the value that he has posed to our community. It's, it's so heartwarming to hear all of the wonderful things that he's done. And quite frankly, you know, so many of our pivotal people in our community were losing this year. And it's just, it's, it's just a really hard time, but it's, I'm so grateful for residents that come out and support and educate all of us that might not have had a chance to, to meet these great people about the wonderful work that they did in the community. I want to thank the residents that came out. Susan, to talk about art in the community, that's something I'm very passionate about as well. And definitely appreciate the goal of really trying to make sure that we're creating these opportunities for youth to be engaged in from soup to nuts in terms of art projects throughout the city. And I definitely think there are some opportunities for us to come up with a process to make sure that that happens. Also want to acknowledge all of the folks that were nominated. I mean, Ward 6 is four people. My goodness. So want to definitely thank all of the folks that are running for office and the people who took the time out to nominate people for, for, for office. This election cycle is going to be, we are going to test ranked choice voting to the max this time. And that is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful thing to see. A few other quick announcements. So the Crossroads Food Crawl is September the 17th. So that is this Saturday and you could still buy tickets. And if you look at all of the participating restaurants, you are probably going to get about a good five meals in, in just on this single food crawl. So definitely want to encourage people to purchase tickets. Tickets are $25. And it includes the Kobe Pan, Tijuana's Mexican Grill, El Campeón Chicken. So just Tony's Villa, it's just a lot of really great food, but you also get a chance to walk around the crossroads, frequent the businesses as well as talk to your neighbors. Also, just want to thank Public Works. We are still completing the crossroads, crosswalk stripping that is happening in New Hampshire Gardens, but we're almost there. There's just two more locations that we're waiting on. Also, the sidewalk project at Hopeville, Kentland and Lurch. So the votes have come through and the design has been voted in favor of. I do want to encourage residents, the vote was very, very close. And I want to encourage people to please let us know if you have any concerns about the, the design of the sidewalk and the impact on your property. Please contact Ian Chamberlain if you have any major concerns around the current design. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great to be back and to see people. And I, the energy at the nominating caucus was phenomenal. And I look forward to the, the election season. I'm excited about a lively and positive sharing of ideas all over the city. I think it's great. And we had the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, came back. Lots of people, lots of energy. And as you just heard, the Crossroads Food Crawl is just one of a number of events coming up in the next few weeks where people can get outside and be together and get to see each other for, after a very long haul. I did have a couple of specific items. One, one was, I was also going to ask that the staff look at the issue on Lincoln and Aspen as part of the public art planning process and take a look at some recommendations for the, for the new council to come back and, and revisit this important issue. And last but not least, speed bumps. So I, I know there are two commu, two streets in Ward 2 waiting for speed bumps. I understand the contract for the, for the work for streets and speed bumps and other associated road construction is back in business. And so I'm looking for a timeline, a target month for Auburn and Lower Prince Georgeus. Whenever we can get that, that would be really fabulous because it's, it's been a few months through nobody's fault, but it's time to get on with it. Thanks.
Hey, thank you very much. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. A few things for the staff first, don't need to be answered tonight, but one, we have started up this new private property tree planting program and I think a lot of people are excited about. One question has been asked of me though, because I know part of what we're attempting to do is ensure that there's a focus on less heavily treated areas. And so what are the components of that plan to help ensure the equity piece is addressed there? Secondly, there was reference, I believe, to, by the mayor on the upcoming agenda for next week maybe or the week after that we'll have the update on certain aspects of ARPA, including, well, I guess a lot of ARPA. I just want to make sure that we have the direct payment update as well then if we can. And I see the city manager's nodding, so that's great. But another thing I've heard recently is that some of the charging stations here in the city aren't functioning well or at all. And I don't think this is something where we can just run out and fix them. We might need to kind of survey them and figure out which ones do and don't work. What I've heard is the Willow Carroll one, which I think is high speed, it's supposed to be high speed, isn't often working. Other sites don't take certain credit cards and/or certain vehicles. And I understand that's a broader problem and maybe we can resolve. But I, I do think we need to get that addressed and the visuals of it are in the public space management plan. But I, I would just think it would be helpful if we could figure out which ones are working or not working. On code enforcement improvements, we talked about maybe getting to that this fall. I don't know if we're going to. So I'll just mention for staff and for my colleagues and future colleagues. When people get cited for needing to make repairs in their homes and then they're told they have 30 days. And I think the challenge can be, if it's a bigger thing these days, you know, you can't get a contractor in 30 days. And I would like to see the messages posted also include something to the effect of, do you need any help? Can we assist you in figuring out how the repairs could be made? So I think that's an important thing going forward. For the people who spoke tonight, I appreciate it. Mary Jane Machui made a great point. And in fact, housing for disabilities, people with disabilities is mentioned in our housing strategic plan. So it's there, we understand it. We just need to make sure that we, that we really live it. And so I, I think that's something to push on, on the master plan. On the public art question, I, I mentioned to a couple of people before the meeting, I do think that can be covered. I hope it can be covered in the public space management discussions that we're having. I just want to correct one thing. The mayor and a majority of us can't just send an email and tell the city. But we can tell the city manager to, to not enforce something, but we are not allowed to do that. We could, nothing to stop us from sending the email, but that'd be inappropriate for us to do that. If we change the rules and the regulations, then we could. And then the last thing, I know I'm running long, mayor, but the comments about Jimmy Jarbo and others, I just want to mention, when I go on Zoom, I have this really great print behind me, which was painted by this local author, Noah McMillan, grew up across the street from me in his 30s. And sadly, we just lost him too, after a really long battle with a range of health challenges. Really wonderful guy, great family, lives across the street from me. Still always have that print behind. I think a lot of people have seen the print because it's on sale around Old Town. I just wanted to make sure that some of the younger people who also lost did get mentioned as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to take a minute and thank Buddy Daniels for coming tonight to do a little memorial on Chief Jarbo. You know, people listen to you, buddy, tonight and say, wow, you know, you listed a lot of things that he's done. But you didn't, you didn't mention the, the work that he's done through the years on the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee or parade and fireworks events. And you didn't mention the many, many years of babysitting classes that he taught in the city. And, you know, he, he, he was a major part of Tacoma Park and he would be deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaman. I think, yeah, many generations benefited from that babysitting class in particular. I just want to add my thanks on the Folk Festival. Talked to the organizers and while. I just want to add my thanks on the Folk Festival. Talked to the organizers and while attended, attendance was a bit lower than they were hoping, given the fact that we had torrential downpour for the first couple of hours. And and it's our first time back. There were estimated over 3,000 people did attend. And I just want to do a huge shout out to our public work staff, our rec department and our police department for helping make sure that day was a success. And I am sorry to those who are commanders, sports fans, that everything was scheduled right around opening day. You call it opening day for football? Yes, you still do, right? I don't know. I'm not a football person. So anyway, I know some people were had to work that day and I appreciate it. I also want to say thank you for an excellent newsletter. This last month, I want to call attention to a number of articles. Councilmember Kovar mentioned the the tree program. We had, there was an excellent article by our urban forest manager, Marty Fry. Jessica Jones did a terrific job outlining the plans for the library and our housing and community development director, I believe, also had some information there and has been doing an excellent job managing that program. And I just want to do a shout out to Mr. Eubanks as well. There was an article today in Greater Greater Washington regarding a property on Lee Avenue that he has been working tirelessly to help residents there form together and use their tenant right to purchase. And it's it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle, putting all the pieces together. And I just want to say thank you for continuing that work and glad that Greater Greater Washington was able to highlight that. Since Mr. Friedman is also here and standing, sitting in front of Mr. Eubanks, I just want to do a shout out to him and the wonderful presentation he did at the Mayor's Innovation Project this summer. We were invited to highlight our racial equity work in the community and how that's being applied. And Mr. Friedman was able to do that. And I heard back from the, we had our steering committee meeting last week and I heard rave reviews. So thank you so much for doing that. This weekend is a busy one. On Sunday, the Old Town Tacoma Pie Contest returns. So folks should partake in that. I was to be a judge, but I am actually going to Chief Jarboe's funeral on Sunday. So we'll be attending that. But for those folks who will be in town, I highly recommend the pie contest. In addition, on Sunday from two to four, if you're interested in Tacoma Park history, it is the 25th anniversary of unification in the city and historic Tacoma. And the City of Tacoma Park will be hosting an event from two to four here in the auditorium. So I ask that you check that out as well as the window of Historic Tacoma in the Junction has a lot of great articles and memorabilia from 25 years ago. And just want to thank also Ms. Comfort for coming today as someone who's worked in youth development for many years. The partnerships with young people and how you described them is very meaningful. And thank you for bringing that to the meeting this evening. I'm with that. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First thing I just want to say is just welcome back to council. I I hope you've had a restful month off because it is going to get really intense this fall. We've got a lot of exciting initiatives and projects that remain here this year. Second thing, I just want to just appreciate staff. Staff has been working extremely hard while you guys were on recess. Getting prepping, preparing, getting ready for this fall, a lot of initiatives. As many of you have stated, we'll have a lot of announcements in a few weeks on ARPA. There'll be more announcements over the next couple of months on a lot of great initiatives that staff is doing. But just want to raise up and appreciate and acknowledge all the staff in the city that do a great job for this community and this organization. The the third item I would just like to to raise as we're part of our ARPA project, mental health. And so with this month, this is suicide prevention month. And so I want to continue to raise that up. There's a lot of events going on across the metro region. And if you know people that are in crises, they can, you can dial 988 and get them connected to health professionals in the region. This is something that we don't talk about enough in the community, but it's very important to our organization. And so we want to continue just to raise that, lift that up for everyone. And the last item that I'll just bring tonight is, as you see with me tonight, I have two lieutenants with me. I have two acting deputy city managers, Gregory Clark and Ross Lynn Grisby. They are acting deputy city managers that will be supporting the organization as we shared a month ago, as we go through transitions. And as far as the departments that report to them, acting deputy city manager Greg Clark has Public Works, Library, HCD and Recreation. And all the basically community facing departments. And acting deputy city manager Roz Grisby has Communications, City TV, IT, ARPA and the city manager's office and really focus on strategic initiatives across the organization. So if if you have any questions related to those departments, please feel free to reach out to one of the deputy city managers. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on now to our voting items. The first is a resolution ratifying agreement with Ask Me Local 3399. Just as a reminder, we, before the break, did a ratify the agreement with our other union local 400. So turn over to the city manager. Any updates on this or?
Nothing further.
Okay, great. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Some of.
Councilmember Smith, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Dibala, second. Any questions, comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Next, we have the first reading ordinance amending the annual budget in order to provide the wage adjustment compensation to employees. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Dibala, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Smith, second. Any comments? Councilmember Kovar, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Oh, all right. You guys might have switched. That's okay. Go ahead.
So I just want to clarify, the $83,000 and change is one and a half percent. It's the difference between the agreement and what's in this fiscal 23 budget. It's not the entire increase. Just making sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Next, we have the resolution authorizing the use of FY22 State Rita Violation or NED grant funds to assist in the acquisition of 320 Lincoln Avenue. And I can turn this over to the city manager for.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff presented to council at the end of July. The use of and to get your support for grant application for the state of Maryland, NED grant. And and what we bring before you this evening is how we will use the funds from the grant. And we have Director Eubanks here to answer any questions, if there are any questions.
Great. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Dibala? All right. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Kostic, I don't know what I was thinking. Councilwoman Kostic, move. Do I have a second? My apologies. I should know. Any comments or questions for the city manager or Director Eubanks? Councilmember Kovar.
Just one quick comment. I think it's, it's not even a question, so you don't have to comment. You can. I think it's a great project and I think it's exactly the type of thing we should do. And I want to just follow along with what the mayor said before. It's a lot of work to put together a project of this sort. And we've done several others and they're all really valuable. We have to continue doing them. But I'm just going to go back to what I often say, which is that in addition to doing each of these things, which takes months and months of staff work and lawyers work and financial work and all that, we do need to find ways to approach affordable housing at scale, at a bigger scale. And so whether that's done through other developments that we talked about potentially at the WA side or elsewhere, I just want to underline that these are great. And we need to go way beyond it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar. And in particular, just to add on to that, that, you know, putting these pieces together, but also applying for grants and getting things like NED grant that we've been very successful with has been terrific to augment the reserve money that we put away during our budget. So thank you for that. All right, seeing no other questions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Great. Next is a resolution designate resident agent for service of process. City manager, have anything to say about this one? No.
Nothing.
No, this is just sort of a logistical thing. Since Deputy City Manager Clark had been named that, we're just need to name the city manager, the designate. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Seamans, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Cersei, second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right, that takes care of our voting session. Now we have two work sessions this evening. And I am very excited to welcome our visitors tonight who are going to walk us through their report on the public space management plan. And first I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
Madam Mayor, again, we have Acting Planning Manager Alex Friedman is going to kick us off and introduce the guest.
Hello again. For those at home, again, my name is Alex Friedman. I'm the acting acting planning manager for the city. And I'm excited tonight to be queuing up a presentation on our public space management plan. And it will be presented by the consultants who've been helping us from the firm CH Planning, working to take this plan across the finish line. The purpose of the public space management plan is to develop a data-driven and equity-infused framework for managing public spaces around the city of Tacoma Park. The need for a new plan more comprehensive and the need for a new plan to more comprehensively approach the management of public spaces first arose in a city council discussion in 2015. And since then, but mostly between 2018 and fall 2021, the plan has moved along in fits and spurts with COVID-19 pandemic causing much of that delay. Although city staff have conducted a number of internal analyses of public space and a variety of public engagement activities during those times, including a community survey and a workshop series last fall, our team felt it was necessary to bring in additional expertise to help finish this project. So tonight's presentation of the first draft recommendations are built on a review of existing conditions and represent recommendations generated from community feedback and staff discussions to date. So I will now hand it over to CH Planning's project lead, Jordan Exantus, joining us here as well as his colleague Laura Connolly to give a fuller presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Jordan Exantus with CH Planning Inspire Green. I'm an urban planner by training, but spent a good portion of my career doing park planning and development as well as number of trail projects. So public space is very near and dear to my heart and we've been working on this project for a few months now and I'm very happy to be here to speak with this group. I think we've spoken to a lot of different groups around town and you all are are the kind of the the last, but certainly not least of folks that we need to speak to to get input on the work that we're doing. So thank you for having us. I'm going to go through this presentation as expeditiously as I can so we can have time to talk through the draft recommendations. But, you know, Alex gave you a great intro. I'm sure you all are very familiar with the work that's being undertaken. But to date, we have met with, you know, many different stakeholders around town as well as doing some of our own analysis to establish an existing conditions report, which is informing a set of comprehensive recommendations that we will share the first draft of today and get your feedback so we can go back and refine and continue to, you know, massage as we prepare for a final report, which will be back here to present the draft of you and to you in early October. So again, this is a scheduled graphic for your consideration. We kicked off in in June. We had our first public meeting. And again, we did existing conditions. And we've been working over the past couple of months to develop recommendations based on all the feedback that we heard and the research that we've done. And we're synthesizing that information into a report, which we'll be sharing with you in October. To give you a little bit idea, I'm not going to go in great depth on the existing conditions. You all know this community better than me, but, you know, existing conditions is, you know, report, you know, before we can develop a plan, we really have to survey and then understand where we are. We took a dive into, you know, population, you know, dynamics and demographics, looking at the inventory of public spaces, everything from streets and roadways, parks and sidewalks. We also looked at the permitting systems, capital budget. And, you know, we we did a dive into a lot of the prior studies and plans that have been done over the past several years around these issues. Everything from, you know, local documents to county documents to help inform our deliverable. And of course, most importantly, we've done quite extensive community outreach to talk to various folks to, you know, get input on, you know, what we should be prioritizing in this process and, you know, what their views are and what's working, what's not working in town. This is just a scheduled graphic that shows you kind of who we've been talking to. We had a site visit in in late May where we spoke with folks from, you know, various city departments as well as the people over at Tacoma Lingley Crossroads Development Authority. We had meetings in early June with MNCPCC and also with MSHA, MNCPCC. We talked to both planning and Parks and Rec. We held a meeting with youth, so it was it was good to hear, you know, your citizens are very concerned about, you know, engaging with youth. And and we did have, that was our first, you know, stakeholder group locally that we met with. And we had a community, our first community meeting, end of June. To both of those meetings were to kind of confirm what we were finding in existing existing conditions and get people's feedback on, you know, kind of, you know, where people saw the issues in town, opportunities and things of that nature. I'll show the the outcome of that work in a later slide. We also met with Tacoma Main Street, the police department and a focus group made up of residents from the multifamily complexes in town. We had our second community meeting at the end of August where we talked through some of the policy and recommendation ideas with people and got their feedback on if we were going in the right direction or not. And just today, we had an opportunity to speak with Brendan at the, you know, for the public arts component of this. And that brings us to current day. Just to give a little bit of context, you know, we did early on with the youth as well as the, you know, broader community meeting, this this map exercise. This is a, you know, common planning tool that we like to use to kind of generate what we call a heat map, you know, to get people's input on town and, you know, put dots on the map. The blue dots kind of represent good things, places that people like to go. Red dots represent problem areas and the yellow dots represent opportunities. And I think from this map, you can kind of begin to see that the southern half of town, you know, people really don't see any glaring issues, but as you move north, we begin to see that there's issues identified and a lot of opportunities to improve and make things better. we begin to see that there's issues identified and a lot of opportunities to improve and make things better. So another analysis that we've been working on is a SWOT. This is an acronym for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. You know, I won't go through this in great detail, but, you know, essentially this is a tool that we use to kind of summarize, you know, analysis of existing conditions to kind of look at, you know, what are the good things that are going on, that those are the strengths and some of those things are very obvious. People really like the parks in town. There's a lot of civic pride here. There's diversity. People feel safe. You know, this building, the community center is well-used. And 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 on the other positive side is the opportunities, things that could be done to, you know, make this place even greater. And this is really based on things that we heard from the community and also from, you know, key stakeholders, things like, you know, improving the sidewalk network to make it more complete. You know, continuing to promote native plants, you know, leveraging, you know, things like the farmer's market and things of that nature. Now, the the less popular, but you know, very important things to to talk about are are some of the weaknesses and and the threats. You know, there's, there's obviously some some challenges in town as it relates to public space. Something that we heard a lot is that there are challenges with, you know, ADA accessibility on certain sidewalk pieces. There's, there's some dangerous street crossings in town. There's some some challenges with, you know, the the different demographics in town and maybe a feeling that, you know, certain parts of town are getting more of a fair shake than others that we get, we've heard a lot of that proverbial squeaky wheel narrative of, you know, certain folks are getting the oil and you know, a desire to kind of shift focus to to other folks who feel like they're they're not as heard. And then in terms of, you know, the physical infrastructure, there's, there's challenges with stormwater. We heard a lot of folks talking about water issues. You know, invasive species. We heard from, you know, police that, you know, especially since the pandemic, there's been some increases in crime and that, you know, a lot of residents were concerned about traffic. So after we, you know, kind of went through this process of, you know, evaluating existing conditions, we also you know, spent a good deal of time going through the town's existing policies. There's a lot of different policies and ordinances on the book and, you know, one of the charges that we have, which is a challenge is to kind of figure out how all these overlapping pieces interact and and how we can kind of, you know, you know, remove some of the roadblocks or help make things more clear for some of these processes that might be hard for residents and even sometimes city staff to understand, you know, how to respond to certain things or how to prioritize decisions. And, you know, that's, that's really created some questions, you know. You know, obviously a big challenge to this kind of work is funding. So, you know, how do we, you know, fund and implement all the ideas that that come out of this process? You know, most of Tacoma Park is already developed, you know, we'd love to, you know, have as much parkland as possible, as much public space as possible, but you know, how do you actually achieve that is is a question to consider? You know, and 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 how public events, you know, are run, you know, how do we need to, you know, make these processes more equitable, more accessible to residents and, you know, kind of demystify how things work so that we don't have issues where, you know, you get rogue actors or or people frustrated with the process. So all this really leads us to kind of the key of why we're here today, which is the the first pass at recommendations. You know, these are not complete, but you know, we've shared our first pass with with residents. We shared again with, you know, people from the various city departments and we've gotten some feedback. And now we're here to share with you all so we can get your reactions so that we can further refine these recommendations. We've we've organized them into various categories. You know, this is based on the the RFP that we responded to as well as our own thoughts about public space management, the different categories that exist. So we've got some general recommendations that we'll talk about first. There's some legal recommendations, some thoughts on acquisition, some thoughts on planning and community engagement, maintenance and operations, development, fundraising and capital budgeting and sustainability. So we'll jump right into it. So the the general recommendations that that we're putting forth is, and these are not necessarily in prioritized order, but these also kind of reflect some of the things that we heard repeatedly as as kind of high priorities. They do touch other categories. The first one is to work to fill gaps in the existing sidewalk network with an emphasis in the school walk shed areas. Another one is to work to improve accessibility to public spaces with an emphasis on completing planned ADA upgrades to identify new opportunities for pedestrian connections to add interpretive signage to educate the local community. Add a variety to the existing park system and recreational opportunities to both improve level of service and diversity of of uses in the public spaces. To, you know, create a system to streamline permitting. To work with the community to identify additional ways to improve pedestrian scale lighting to support safety and visibility. To continue to improve wayfinding at trails, parks, connections and major destinations. Establish an official protocol to work with different city agencies to review and update the city's public space inventory. Establish a working group to discuss and prioritize public space efforts and include key external agencies such as SHA and MNCPCC. To continue to build awareness of public space management efforts in the community. And inventory the public space network, planned improvements and recently completed projects and GIS. Align this work with the CIP and update it regularly and also align this with recommendations from the complete Safe Streets Committee work that was recently completed. Do we want to get feedback after each one or go through all of these? That's kind of a lot.
Go through each one. No, just go through it.
Go straight through.
We stop.
All right, I got you.
We will be here till tomorrow morning.
I, you know, I, I, my
Keep going.
My instinct is to like stop and take questions, but I realized.
I would go through it all and then we'll come back.
Thank you. So as far as legal recommendations, it's a little shorter list. It is what first is to pursue lease agreements and long-term maintenance agreements. And this is primarily with parking planning, but it could be other entities. Allow and promote the activation of public space in areas outside of Old Tacoma Park to create a public space stewardship guide to help residents and other stakeholders navigate regulatory processes and to consolidate permit responsibilities and streamline processes. For acquisition, some of the recommendations are to develop some thresholds for public space acquisition, maintenance and management, including a desired ratio of public space per person. Identify the desired amount of public space within each ward. Solidify a system to identify and prioritize future park and public space development. Policy for reviewing upcoming opportunities at a minimum is recommended. While a parcel-specific plan is not desired, should develop an acquisition fund and identify resources that may be available should desirable acquisitions become available? And identify ways to improve coordination with MNCPCC to participate in their annual acquisition program. Planning and community engagement. So the first recommendation here is to refine the outreach strategy which ensures that ethnic minorities and low-income residents are engaged in planning efforts which impact their communities and to devote adequate resources so that city departments can spend the time developing requisite relationships to to really do that important work. Identify key issues for vulnerable populations and prioritize them in planning and implementation decisions. Conduct a safety analysis and recommendations to help complete the sidewalk network within the school walk shed. Activate use of viable paper streets to support public uses and consider relinquishing or selling non-viable paper street properties to the adjacent property owners. Consider implementing an open streets program that provides programming throughout Tacoma Park to foster awareness and education about the importance of public space and alternate transportation methods. And walk to pop-up style public events. Work with the Arts and Humanities Commission to create an equity review process for the design and implementation of public art. Continue to develop relationships with MNCPCC, Maryland State Highways and other state and regional bodies to elevate public awareness of public space facilities, maintenance and programming. Continue to foster and promote nature-based education and recreation programs across all ages. Work with community organizations to provide information and develop a reasonable permitting process for temporary events uses on public space. And identify ways to align cities' public space management priorities with local resources, which could be things like, you know, potentially designating a volunteer coordinator to, you know, work with eager residents who really want to help in some of these efforts. Continuing with the vegetation management events that the town is currently doing and doing things like formalizing the right-of-way agreement for Dorothy's Woods. For maintenance and recommendations, recommendations include refine the playground renovation schedule to ensure it can be fully funded and include representatives from the city of Tacoma Park Department of Recreation, include healthy public engagement in this process. Improve communication among internal and external stakeholders. Identify a revenue source for implementing a strategy for removing invasive species. Continue to use equity considerations to affirm city's commitment to development and update of a bus shelter development and maintenance plan. Develop a review process to evaluate recreational program demands and gaps per age group and across all populations. And continue to do the work to address encroachments in the sidewalk from tree roots and shrubs and other obstacles. For development, recommendations are to establish a need-based playground and park equipment replacement system based on existing conditions and equity considerations. Initiate a citywide natural resource inventory. The goal should be to identify natural areas that are high priority and should be protected and preserved. And these areas would also be the focus for invasive species removal. Create guidelines on how open space will be incorporated into future development and redevelopment effort to inform exactions. This could relate to like we just heard from the minor master plan, you know, if the town has something on paper that says, you know, we want when redevelopment comes to prioritize this type of, you know, public space, it could help ensure that the city gets what it wants in in these processes. And to consider developing a strategy to put new utilities underground. For fundraising and capital budgeting, the key recommendations are to promote transparency in the city's public space management budget and to develop initiatives and programs by ward. Look for grant funding to match with existing city budgets to help take on larger projects and to continue to provide multiple opportunities for the public to provide input into the capital improvement program process. And last, but certainly not least, issue of sustainability. The recommendations are to define all public space and the intended use of this space within the city of Tacoma Park and circulate this information to all residents. Implement more green stormwater infrastructure in public spaces and reduce impervious surfaces where possible. And encourage residents to participate in programs to help mitigate runoff that are available at the county and state level. Continue to do the work to, you know, seek state-of-the-art stormwater management solutions that allow for maximum infiltration and continue the use of public space. Establish a working committee with Montgomery County Storm Drain Design and perhaps the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Continue to prioritize planting native plants in public spacial and encourage property owners to also plant native plants. This will assist with tree canopy goals and addressing stormwater concerns. Formalize the city's commitment to native plants and identify invasive species of particular interest and coordinate with the county to improve erosion controls in the city's watershed. So I know it's a lot to digest, but that is the the end of of the recommendations. So happy to hear comments or or field questions. I'm going to grab my notebooks.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. You have quite a number of recommendations and given the hour, just going to say to my colleagues that I think we can, you know, raise big picture things and points, but that if going through each of the recommendations, having time to kind of digest this and then email back questions and things. So with that, I'm going to model that behavior and step back for a bit as we think about the end product. And I think I'm probably looking at Mr. Friedman more than anyone else. I I think, and you may already have this in mind, as this is a document that's going to and a plan that is going to, you know, live on beyond, obviously, this city council for others, I think it would be really helpful to have it somewhere like our overall vision for this. You know, like, what is the vision for this? What are our goals? And I, you know, look at Miss Comfort again and think about her comments this evening. A number of the recommendations, you know, puts an emphasis on equity. And I think as a model, we can use as our strategic housing and economic development plan because we did have an overall vision statement from that. And then, you know, after that, we talked about, you know, what are our goals here? It's to preserve, produce, protect. And then we define that. I I think as a body here, as the the city council kind of us establishing that and then looking at your excellent recommendations as the strategies in which we are going to make that vision and goals a reality. And those strategies may change. You know, there may be short-term ones, long-term ones, things that as opportunities come up, we're more able to do them than others. But I think if we can set that framework, first and foremost, then that allows staff, all of you, to then have that bigger picture direction. And just as we've done with the housing, then implement that following the strategic recommendations, but also doing it, you know, a little bit freer. So it's not just like, oh, we said you're doing, you know, these five things under the recommendations on sustainability, but you may not be able to do that or other things come up. So that's just sort of my big picture feedback. I think these recommendations are great. There's a lot to look at here. But I think having set a vision and some goals that kind of tease out the so at the macro level and establishes that will, you know, help us in developing this plan. And, you know, thank you for all the work and it's it's excellent and the the feedback on the community engagement is terrific. With that, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Demala.
Thank you. This was great and I really appreciate you coming out. I may be one of the few people who remembers the beginning of this public planning space planning process. I may be one of the few people who remembers the beginning of this public planning space planning process. And at the top, so I so I agree, I'd like I'd like to send more detailed comments. Which would require me to get your email at some point, but. Backing up, the the vision is important. I remember when we started this, having the discussion, for example. Between the old open space plan, which was about acquiring natural areas. And the kind of community that we have and the kinds of public spaces that we have today, many of which are not natural areas. So so that's a a way to look at the. What are we all about here with this with this set of proposals? They are ambitious. There's a lot of them. Some of them strike me as more fundamental than others and some of them strike me as coming in in order. Can't do one until you do the other. So maybe a little more structure around that to help guide us. Through this wish list of of very of great ideas. A couple of, oh, I know what I was gonna say. Acquisition of natural areas generally, when you talked about it, troubled me a little because there's really not much to acquire. And so rather than think a lot about a theoretical framework for choosing between two. Hypothetical natural parcels that don't exist in our community anymore. You know, thinking about how we can make use of pocket parks or empty lots or I I don't know. That that'd be a a way to look at the acquisition section. And some of these, like the Natural Resources inventory or ideas that have been talked about. For a while in other contexts and we can catch up on on all of that, but I really, I really enjoyed this and I appreciate all the. Thought that's gone into it and all the background work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. I could probably talk with you about this for a couple hours, so I will try to keep this short. I have some sort of more specific things, which I think I'll start with and then some bigger picture questions. First of all, just looking at that map, I know you noted there weren't a lot of issues kind of in the southern part, which is a part of my ward. So I I would encourage you to do a little more outreach there because I I don't think that's actually reflective of the case. Particularly in the Pinecrest neighborhood where we do have a lot of. Stormwater management issues, there are dumping issues in some of the public land there. And and traffic issues as well. So I I think it's important to kind of look there. As you're kind of going through, looking at the city as a whole. One one thing that did happen there fairly recently is getting a new park about five years ago. So that's been a really positive thing and might sort of be why people are looking more positively at it, but there are also some issues there. It struck me as I was looking through a lot of this, that a lot connects with transportation. And I know you mentioned the the traffic calming policy, which is something we have been talking about updating for a long time. And needs updating. We've also talked about adopting a vision zero policy, which I think. Could be potentially a part of this recommendation because it also applies to the way that people are. Safe in public spaces. I also wondered whether you looked, you kind of alluded to it a little bit, but I wondered whether you looked specifically at parking at all and. Maybe alternative uses of parking spaces for green space or, you know, narrowing streets, those sorts of things. Did you look at that at all?
We we have and we heard, you know, as I'm sure you could imagine, very differing views on, you know, the parking dynamics in town. And I'm sure you're aware, having been involved in these processes, it's it's a very contentious issue, so. We we've broached it. We haven't made specific parking recommendations yet. We're kind of still thinking through that. But it will be, you know, documented in the plan and and talked about. But I I think we need, you know, more thought given to that particular issue and 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 kind of, you know, more direction from the city in terms of. You know, what they want to emphasize and prioritize with regard to parking.
Yeah, I think even if it is. Something that isn't totally sorted out in the final plan, I think it's important that something be mentioned related to that. Being under consideration or or being something for the city to think about. Your answer there just made me think of sort of one of the things I wanted to raise a little later on, which was how you're balancing in your recommendations. Both the community input as well as kind of just general practice, best practices and expert knowledge on. How, you know, how you should design a community.
That's a good question. I I was, you know, our last community meeting, I was I was joking with the staff and saying, you know. The the community here is is very well informed, so that they they make our work. You know, easier than than some other places. So I think a lot of what you see has come from the community. You know, I'd say a good portion of it is, you know, comes from best practices and and our own, you know, knowledge of these kind of things. But yeah, I I I think the town and its residents, they really bring forth a lot to the table, you know, people are have been. You know, sending me reports and, you know, residents went and created their own list of, you know, recommendations and sent them to me. So, you know, I I believe a planning process should be that way, kind of built from the ground up, so. We've we've incorporated as much of that as we think makes sense. A lot of it does match with our own thinking and. We've been kind of filling in the gaps as as necessary.
Thank you. That's great. And then my more kind of big picture. Questions are, I I think the recommendations are really great and I'm excited about having this plan. I'm also just a little bit nervous looking at it about how long it's taken for us to develop this. And then I I'm looking at some of the recommendations that are in here that seem like huge undertakings in and of themselves. So is there some component of this where you could? Sort of give a timeline outlook of, you know, how long would it take to develop the, you know, just. And it could be a range, but how long could it take to develop some of these more detailed plans? Because I don't want us to just have a plan, you know, kind of, what are we, seven years down the road now? Just have sort of the big picture. Here's what we should be doing because some of that I think we've known for a while. I I'd love to get into the, you know, this specific property is one that we value or this specific thing is something that we. Want to do more on and I'm I'm curious how we get from this to that without taking another, you know, long, long time.
No, I I appreciate that. I think, you know, it was it was mentioned earlier, kind of. You know, the framing of this prioritization, short term versus long term, and I think that's that's really the. The next step for us is we we we've kind of had a lot of information dumped on us and we're kind of. You know, synthesizing it and I think the the where this is going to really begin to take shape is is. As we go through all of that, putting it into a framework so we can begin to say, okay, these are the short-term priorities. This is who needs to be involved. You know, these are, you know, things that are going to cost, you're gonna have to identify funding for. This is where you might be able to find it. You know, these are like long-term, kind of like, I want to call it pie in the sky because anything's possible, but you know, these are kind of like bigger aspirational things. That it's going to be a process to get there. Yeah, so that's that's definitely kind of the next stage of of this work, so. You know, I understand that you all have been, you know, working on this plan for a long time. You know, we're we're getting to know the the community and I think, you know, we we have a pretty good idea of. You know, what needs to be done and and now we just kind of have to, you know, put it all into a format that that makes sense. Because I I think that's that's what we've been hearing a lot of is, you know, there's been work done. It's it's kind of all in different places and we need help framing it, figuring out how it all fits together, so. You know, that's that's our next, you know, big task and really the kind of the key piece of this to develop over the next few weeks before we come back in October is to. To create that framework for making decisions. What do you do first, you know, so that we're we're not. Keep bumping into this chicken and egg situation.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I think just to build on that, I I was remembering, I know I mentioned before the housing strategic plan. But if you look at that and the big picture we had, and I think Miss Groomsby might remember this as well. What staff then developed after that, after council adopted, that was a spreadsheet that had very specific things with work line. That then that helped staff look at it, but it wasn't like council had to okay each. Little project because that will be a nightmare. In the future. You know, it was like, we said the bigger picture and then. This is how staff is going to implement it and I and I see a lot of the things that you have here are great ideas and everything, but. Take, just taking a look at that and how that that might address some of the things we're raising.
And and I think the prioritization will be really key. And and then I think the prioritization even within some of those, kind of like the second level prioritization in terms of like. Which properties or which parking spots or whatever it is, like which stormwater management areas do we focus on? That that will be really important. And then the final thing I I'll say is just in that as well, if you can think about. Because I I assume this will be a long-term product, it's something we're using for years, sort of ongoing feedback loops. So that, you know, people can can have a way built in to sort of review this on an ongoing basis and. Update as new technologies come out and and everything else happens.
Yeah, 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 sorry. You have to come to the podium or else people watching on Zoom can't hear you.
I'm sorry. For the record, my name is Laura Conley and I am a planner with CH Planning. And to your recommendation, we do. Think there would be a good idea to continuously engage the community about how to use your public open space. How do you want it managed? And so that and feedback is that constant feedback is vital.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick. Councilwoman Sirc.
Well, I followed up Councilwoman Kostick's and 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 she she's kind of taken my thunder. But I do want to re re emphasize, you know, in my mind. Because I had an opportunity and thank you all so much to participate in some of the community engagement meetings. And I do think that as part of those SWAT exercises. I think people were thinking more about perhaps. Places where public space could be better utilized and perhaps a little less so around. Issues of like stormwater management concerns or some of the sustainability aspects that that might have been brought up later. In some of the latter recommendations. And so in my mind, what I would love to see is a bit of an overlay between some of those locations. That were identified in the map with the 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 blue, the yellow, the red. And then how some of the recommended approaches could potentially be leveraged to try to. Solve some of those issues, right? So there's a bit of an overlay. I think that what the mayor has mentioned is is a really good approach. If you could kind of take that step back and really think about what are our ultimate goals. How some of our, some of the recommendations that you all have clearly laid out. Can kind of fit within some of those larger goals. And then for staff and others, you know, as we're looking at that map of some of the identified opportunities that we could leverage. Combined with what we know about how the city functions, right? Because I don't know if it's necessarily going to be the case that, you know, our contractors would be able to weigh in on. How much money is going to take or how long is it going to take? Like, that's something that we would have to work in conjunction with you all to kind of figure out. To develop that ultimate work plan of what are the specific priority parcels that we want to focus on? What are the specific recommendations we think we could potentially leverage to fix that issue? And then how long would it take for us to see it realized? And and I think that's in my mind, kind of where I would love to see us head in that direction of. Trying to address some of those issues.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So one piece that we have been bouncing back and forth on is sort of how much detail to drill down in this. Because it's such an expansive scope that, you know, it could just become like a 1,000-page document. And I don't think that's useful for anybody. So I, one piece that hasn't been totally fleshed out yet that we're working with. Jordan and team on is is where there are not specifics. Can we have a process in place that we can apply to new situations or situations that are not. You know, every single possible thing that might come up in the scope of public space because I don't. I think that would reduce our nimbleness and ability to even react to them. So to that regard, I think that. Looking, we've we've actually, as a staff, been sort of, we're advising them not to look at. Address by address specific parcels for things relating to acquisition and the broader strokes that we can then as a staff. You know, look at, we know that this area needs this thing or we have heard from someone that this is an issue. How do we put that into our process that allows us to? You know, think about it thoughtfully and carefully, but also not be like, well, it it's not on the list of properties we decided on, which. I think is actually part of what we ran into with the last versions of the open space plan. It was like, there was a list and it was. You know, we didn't act on some of them and they're still on that list and we acted on things that weren't on the list and. So we want to try to avoid that piece of that.
Yeah, and that's why I think the the housing and economic development plan is a really good model because it does have those higher level goals. A little bit of specifics, but then an appendix or something that you all could. Update on a regular basis from a staff perspective that could also be used to help with identifying budgetary needs, right? So as we're starting to think through the budget and where we need to place our monies. That is, that was a really helpful approach that we may want to definitely consider for for this exercise too.
Thank you, yes.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you so much for this presentation. This was a comprehensive report. It's gonna take me a little time to digest it. City Tacoma Park, we have a very large population, forty plus percent that lives in rental housing apartments. And it's a majority ethnic city. So when you did your focus groups with this population. Can you elaborate more on what they wanted to see and were these different, were there differences? Between this population and, you know, the single-family homeowners. And their ideas of public space and in parks and with how to activate those parks and. Can you give us some more information?
So I I can say, you know, that was a was a great conversation and it really helped me see the city in a in a different light. You know, these folks have a very different lived experience than other residents in the city. The first thing that really jumps out in my mind, which I've since told this story a lot since. You know, I I've done several site visits in town. When we had that focus group, there was a woman. Who mentioned, you know, that, you know, there are a lot of disabled folks that live in these buildings. She's like, we have a hard time getting in and out. You know, the sidewalks are not all ADA accessible. We got to take our wheelchair into the street to get down the road. It's not safe. You know, so on and so forth. You know, it it really made me look at the town different because I'm driving around to come apart and all of a sudden I'm seeing all the utility poles and all the like. Impediments in the sidewalk and I'm like, oh, okay, like this is what she was talking about, right? You know, and in addition to that, you know, there was a sense that. You know, and I alluded to it before with the kind of squeaky wheel, but a lot of times that like there was planning happening in town. That was directly impacting where they live, but they weren't central in the conversations and that the planning was in fact. You know, maybe unintentionally creating some adverse impacts for for them. We heard a lot about people who, you know, need parking for their work vehicles. Because they, you know, do, you know, construction or whatever the case may be and, you know, the ideas that, you know, us planners and and good urbanists like. For bike lanes and, you know, all these kind of things. They were kind of like, look, like we we need this space for. You know, our parking. You know, there there were conversations about. You know, different things, you know, like people wanting, you know, something like. You know, an an urban, a garden or something, but you know, maybe, you know, the the landlord wouldn't allow it or, you know, there's. There were so many different experiences that that came through that conversation that that demonstrate, you know, some of the challenges. You know, also too, just things that, you know, we all kind of know is that, you know, the parks and the parts of town that are. Where more affluent folks live or they seem a little bit better shaped. Parks near the multifamily, those are some of the parks that, you know, are. Parks near the multifamily, those are some of the parks that, you know, are, you know, not as updated, not as well maintained, you know, and obviously some of those parks are not, you know, owned by the city. They're MNC PPC parks. So it's a, it's a different, you know, controlling entity. But, you know, the, the fact remains is that, you know, the park behind the apartments over there, it was at Opale Daniels, like the picnic pavilion is behind a gate, you know? So, eh, these are issues that, that they're grappling with. You know, but, but all in all, I think what we also heard, which was encouraging, is that people really liked living here. They love Sligo Creek. You know, they, they like to, to get out and, and use the public space. You know, when, when we had our youth meeting, I showed a picture, the youth meeting was all youth of color. You know, some of us were grappling with life issues. I think they were only in our meeting because they needed the community service credits. But, you know, they would say, you know, like they, they feel at peace when they're, when they're walking on those trails in Sligo Creek. And, you know, told stories about how, you know, they're going through certain life situations and, you know, that space, you know, helped them feel a little bit better. So I think, you know, the, the moral of the story is, is that, you know, for these folks that, you know, maybe you know, have a little bit rougher go of it, the, the public space considerations are almost more important to them than for other folks who are using these spaces just for leisure or recreation, I think for, you know, the residents of, you know, multifamily and people who are dealing with, you know, disabilities, so on and so forth. You know, the public space really represents something, you know, very deep to them and very important to their way of life. Because anyone that's lived in a big city in an apartment knows that, you know, that's, that's where you go to sleep, you know, your living room is outside. So for them, the way outside is configured is really important because they don't have a backyard with a playground to push their kids on the swing, right? So that needs to be provided for them. So, you know, the, like I said, that, that conversation really kind of shifted the direction of the work that we're doing in a significant way.
Excellent. Did people talk about what they would want to see in their parks? The people that live in apartment buildings? I mean, I know you said about gardening, but is it a basketball court? Is it a tennis court? I mean, is it something other than what we have now for most of our parks in the city?
You know, there is a little bit of that, but if, if I'm being honest, I think most of the, the conversation was really about access. Being able to get to and from safely. And, you know, being disconnected.
I do want to, go ahead.
Go ahead. You know, I, I think people felt generally that, you know, they had things that they like to use in these parks. You know, there were suggestions and recommendations. It was, you know, granted that, that particular meeting was mostly adults of a certain age and older. You know, it wasn't like a lot of young people who were like, you know, we want a skate park. But, you know, they, they did say that, you know, they wanted to see certain things. But it was more related to, I would say, transportation, you know, like the bus shelters and how those are maintained. And, and some of those types of issues more so than the park equipment itself.
Would you like that?
I just want to add to Jordan's comments. He heard the public engagement side. I have done some of the research on your existing conditions. And what we found is many of the parks have many of the similar amenities. Playground equipment, swings, those types of things. So research shows that if you add more activity to your public open space, to your park areas, they become more engaging, because not only do you take your toddler there, but maybe you can take your parent there and they can exercise or use a walking trail while you're, you know, reading your book or catching up on your email at a nice sitting area. So the more variety you add into your open space, the more engaging, the more appealing it becomes. And again, the existing conditions that we found were, you know, there's a lot of the same element in every park. So if you could add things up, add some variety in the existing conditions. I also looked at population and you did say that, you know, you're pretty well diverse and that's true. I looked at age. Seventy-five percent of Tacoma Park is over the age of eighteen. Twenty-five percent is under the age of eighteen. So when you're looking at services that you provided your parks, are you considering all age groups?
That, that's very good information. Do people understand the difference between city parks and the county parks, or do they just go to parks?
It, it's, it didn't really come up in community conversations, but my sense is that people are not really generally making a distinction between the two. You know, I, that's, that's not my, you know, feeling. I do know that, you know, when people who are more well-versed that seem to really know what's going on, there were some comments like, you know, the MNC PPC parks are not maintained as well as the city-owned parks. But that's, you know, that comment was heard a couple of times, but that, that's pretty much it. Other than that, I don't, I don't think people really made much distinction between the two.
I, I know it's late, just two quick questions. One, were residents afraid that going to some of the parks was, was crime an issue?
You know, it's interesting, we, we asked that question because, you know, as having worked in parks, you know, you know that sometimes stuff goes on in parks that, you know, maybe shouldn't. But yet, to be honest, people didn't really give that sentiment. I haven't, didn't, we didn't hear any horror stories. We haven't heard anything about people being afraid. People did, you know, say they wanted to see more and better lighting. You know, when we spoke with police, they told us that, you know, there has been an uptick in crime. But not specifically in the parks themselves. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's good news to me, I'd say, because, you know, you know, obviously things can happen. But yeah, generally speaking, people said they felt safe in these spaces. They were, they felt more concerned by getting hit by a car. You know, walking around than they did going into the parks.
And then last point, last question here. On the map that you gave us, it had crime, right? Was that something that the police told you about, or is that something that the residents told you about? If residents told you about that, have you given that information to the police department? That's, thank you.
On the, on the map?
There, there's a map that you had the little stickers on it and. Yeah.
That wasn't crime.
That wasn't crime.
There wasn't crime?
No, that was, they were indicating an issue. You know, it could be an issue with water. I know in the youth meeting, they were like, there's a, there's a beehive over here. People get, just keep getting started by bees. It was just, you know, any random problem, you know, something that needed to be fixed. It wasn't crime. You know, the police, when we spoke with them, they, they gave us some, some anecdotes about the crime situation in town. But we did not geolocate that information to any particular area.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Siemens, you want to follow up?
I just wanted to follow up on what you were talking about on the different perspective in a lower, lower income neighborhood. And I would just wanted to encourage my colleagues to remember that as we talk about other business besides just the open space use. But in particular, I'm thinking of the minor master plan when we're talking about Maple Avenue and parking and, and other public space use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Do you need to say anything about?
No, because I'm thinking we're, we're going to get through this and we're going to get through the next one.
Okay. Thank you for, for the presentation and then for all the work. I appreciate it. Just a few comments. One, and I wasn't sure if I understood correctly what you were saying, but if the question is, say, for potential acquisition or something like that, to me, I wasn't thinking this report would say, here are the six things we might buy as much as, if we had the money for it, as much as here are the six things we would take into account in deciding what to buy. And, and I'm not sure if I was misunderstanding that part of the discussion, but that's, that's just my, my thought on that. Few other things I'll mention. I think the signage is really important and there's a, a lot of issues that relate to signage, it's everything from when old signs are taken down and people want to preserve them for history. So that's an issue for us. But also when you enter into Tacoma Park, in some cases, in some places, it says you're entering Tacoma Park. I don't know if we ever say you're leaving Tacoma Park, but it feels like that should be standardized and the park signs in general, the ones we control, not the county ones. You know, there are even some little pocket parks, which are not far from, is one not far from where I live, where it's just one little, it looks like the size of a warehouse might be, it's, it's empty. I don't think most people even know it's a park. And if it is, maybe it should be, it should be labeled as that. I say this all the time, my colleagues will tell you this, but I think it's important here too. And the mayor and others did mention the housing strategic plan. I think it's really important that this get linked, you know, in fairly specific ways with three or four of our other big plans. So there's the racial equity policy, the climate framework, the housing strategic plan, which they mentioned. And some of the tree initiatives we're doing and the public safety task force. We have all of those and they all are interconnected. And I don't think you weren't saying that, because those are touched on in certain points in here. But I think it needs to be just made a little bit more specific. I, I would say that. And then just a few other points. You talk about standardizing the permitting process and that could relate to public art, which we already talked about tonight and, and should be an important component of this. But it goes beyond that and gets to, you know, when the groups want to clean up Dorothy's Woods or whatever, I think you talked about that a bit. And I think it's really important to have that type of standardization, because I don't think we want to be in a situation where kind of only well-connected people who speak English are able to do that. And so, you know, people have come to me and said, let's have a, a garden over in this particular spot. It might be a great idea, but there has to be a way to, not just because one group comes up and says it, it looks good, they get it. There has to be a, a process. And then what relates to that, and I just have two more things here, is in ARPA, and I don't know how close you've seen this, but one of the things that we agreed to fund and we're still now working out the details, there's a lot going on with ARPA. But it's this navigator's program, which is aimed at identifying people, community leaders in various parts in the city that maybe at times have been underserved and identifying people who can then be conduits to, to folks there. And I think that really is a, a linchpin to, to some of this. Because if we want the equity piece of it to fit in with everything else, using that program, which I admit we haven't fully defined yet how to do it, will, will be crucial for that. And then the last thing I'll just mention. Let's see, is it the last thing I'm going to mention? It is the last thing I'm going to mention. You mentioned a couple of things in the report that kind of have already happened. We've already designated native species. And since, it sounds like my colleagues think there might almost be too many recommendations. You could maybe knock that one out or just, or just make note of it. And I think we even have, I think there's something in there about a threshold pre-canopy level. We also have already passed a resolution on that. So I think you might find that a few of the things, not that they're not relevant, but they don't have to be recommendations because they, maybe we've already done them. And I'll follow up and, and channel the mayor with my more specific things and just do a reminder on a couple of those. You'll, you'll know what they are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to like the, the point you just made about the different types of parks and variety. That is just so helpful. And again, I would lean more towards having that type of guidance versus very like specifics. Because I think that will help guide future councils when we have like the idea of processes and what our goals are. And that is really helpful to know about, you know, thinking about different parks and things. Because as Councilwoman Kostic and I know and others, when we are like redoing a park, there's a lot of debate and, and other things. And, you know, having some of that, you know, what are the things we should be looking at and guidance on that would be super helpful.
So that goes back to my point about constantly getting community input. Constantly pulling the community, what, what do we need? What do we want?
Yep. Great. Well, we're looking forward to more of this this fall. Thank you for spending the evening with us and for, for signing this. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. All right.
Thank you for having us.
Great. So as we know, we are supposed to wrap up our meetings by 11 o'clock and I think we can do it tonight. Our last work session is the election update and draft election ordinance. And my turn, so it's the manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this evening. Madam Deputy City Clerk will speak to this item with election plan.
Hi, good evening. So I'm just going to give you an election update. The election will be conducted largely by mail. Ballots will be mailed to all qualified registered voter, voters. Ballots will be mailed the week of October 10th. Voted ballots in their return envelopes can be dropped in the ballot drop boxes located at the recreation center or at the community center down in the police department lobby. They can also be mailed. We are planning to contract with a ballot tracking service. Voters who sign up can be informed of their ballot status by email, text, or voice. The community center will be open on election day from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM to allow voters to cast ballots in person if they so choose and to serve voters not yet registered or who need other assistance with voting. Voters who plan to be out of town in the months of October and November can submit an absentee application to have their ballots mailed to their temporary address. We encourage voters to submit those applications as soon as possible. And as always, unregistered voters are welcome to come to the community center to register. Once ballots are available, newly registered voters will be available to receive a ballot at the same time. Members of the Board of Elections serve as election judges. The Board appoints election workers to assist with the election. Election judges and workers will be paid based on the Montgomery County's election judge and workers rates. We plan to publish days and hours and in, sorry, when ballots will be processed so that residents could come to the auditorium to observe. Election results will be certified on Wednesday, November 16th. Any questions?
Great. I just had a couple of questions. Last night it was noted, and I know, I think you've heard this, that some of the information on the website is a little confusing, because I think people don't realize that on election day, there's going to be in-person voting. So if we could just review that. I've talked to a number of people and they're like, no, this is all by mail. And I said, no, we're having in-person voting on election day, so.
And that is correct. And we're working on that.
Okay. And I know last night it was also brought up whether or not the Board of Elections could explore the capacity to also have as a voting site, the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue on election day, if that's a possibility. And then just finally, just making sure everyone remembers, 16 and 17-year-olds can vote and non-US citizens can vote in our local election. They can also register at any time, right?
Yes.
Also nominate people, which they did last.
Yes, and they can also nominate people, which they did last night. Councilmember Siemens, your lights on. Do you have anything else to say?
That was it.
Awesome. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Is this the first time we've had the ballot tracking service? Because I don't remember us doing that.
This will be the first time.
Okay, great. And is there any way we can have like a QR code so that people can just use their phone? Have the site come up and then they can put in the relevant information rather than like just going to a website?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to come back to this point of ballot, of their being voting the day of. But this being largely by mail and drop box. So is it fair to say the city is encouraging people not to stand online on election day? Or is it that we want people to vote on election day and the ballots are being mailed just in case?
Well, I believe the board decided to, to continue with the mail-in. We did it in the last election. We had a very large turnout. So I think it's just the convenience to just, you know, have that, that turnout, that large turnout once again. But at the same time, we'll just have that in-person voting that we didn't have at that last election. We had the sort of the drive-by, drop your ballot in the box.
Yeah, I guess I counted that in person, but yeah, okay. So the difference is.
We haven't really worked out the logistics. Whether it'll be sort of the same thing where we did the drive-by, drop your mail, your ballot in the box or whether we'll go back to the traditional way where we had the ballot boxes inside the auditor, I'm sorry, inside the community center and have them vote that way. But that's something the board and we're work, we're working on.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And just a few questions also. Appreciate the information. One of the things that's in the list of Thank you, and just a few questions. Also appreciate the information. One of the things that's in the, uh, list of, of items is the public counting of the ballots. And in the, um, last election, it was kind of the height of COVID and so we could kind of look at. People wandering around moving piles of paper here and there, and then they weren't doing anything wrong. That was, that was the best we could do under the situation. But do we know how public the counting will be? It will be done live and people could come and sit in and observe the counting taking place? Because that's, that is what happened in years past and, and if, if the answer isn't available now, that's okay, but I think that would be important to try to encourage if we can.
I think the idea is that's what we want to do once again.
Okay.
To have it open to the public.
Okay.
Um, I can see us also having it, you know, um, the way we had on video for those who can't come in person. You may have that option as well. I don't see why.
But not necessarily limited to that.
But not exactly, yes.
And then on ranked choice voting, um, seems like it's going to be really important this year because so many, um. Um, based on last night's nodding caucus, there's a lot of candidates and so I just want to make sure, I think people know we've had it. But it maybe hasn't been used all that much. So just in, when we send out the sample ballot or whatever information, that's really explained exactly how that works. Because we don't want anybody to be, you know, confused by it.
Correct. I, I think with the number of candidates we have this year, I think it's going to be really important for us to, um. Inform the public of this, um, of our ranked choice voting, um, any way possible. So we're going to get that information.
And just, uh, two other things, uh, the material mentioned that the vex, that the vaccine policy will apply to the election day workers. Does that mean they have to show that they're vaccinated? Is that what that is?
I'm not sure if that's, well, they're volunteers, so I will assume I will, city manager, yes, well then, yes.
And then for the mailing out of the ballots, do, do we have to vote to approve that contract? Has that already been done? I, I'm just, I don't recall. I know we passed the election measure over the summer. And but do we know who the contractor is to mail that stuff? Or is that set up?
Jesse's working on that.
Okay, okay, that's, Jesse Carpenter, right?
We'll be presenting that probably.
Yeah, th- those are really my, my only questions. I just mentioned, um, following up on Councilmember Dibala's point. The turnout was so great, we have to keep doing it this way, but I still do feel a, there's a one loss in the sense that we don't get to do that. In-person politicking at the, at the, uh, voting. Site on election day because so few people are coming, but I understand that's, that's just the way that goes. But it is a, a regrettable downside to what otherwise is a great system for increasing turnout. So, thank you.
It's regrettable because we can't stop by to get a bowl of chili or anything like that.
I own, I still think we should do that. I asked her last night. Glass is still doing the chili. Good. Any other questions? No, I, um, think we're done then unless the city manager or other city staff need us for anything. Nope, we are good. All right. Well, thank you all. We are adjourned and we'll be back here next Wednesday evening. Thank you.